We can call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. The 22nd of October, 2015, it is 7:02 PM, and we are in the M.L.A. School Library. Let's start with a roll call.
Marty Gane.
John McInnes.
Jay Blower.
Bob Coon.
Rich Gannon.
Roger Warren.
Tom McInnes.
Stan Sedway Planner. Okay, on the agenda, item one is approval of the agenda. Item two is approval of minutes. And then we have pending applications. Item one on the pending applications is RSU 21 M.L.A. School Expansion, Plenary Site Plan Determination and Completion. Item number two is Motor Land Revision of Plenary Site Plan Permit. Item three, 784 Alford Road Site Plan Reapplication. New applications. Item number one, Brookside Estates Preliminary Subdivision Application for Conditional Use Application. And then we have Land Use Ordinance Revisions. Item number one, a review of the new land use ordinance format. And we will hear from the planner on any report he has for us. We'll adjourn the hall.
I've got a question, approval of minutes, which minutes are we approving? Is it unposted?
There's none. Well, evidently, we're not approving any if there's none posted.
You approved everything last time when I wasn't here?
No, I was not here the last time.
All right. Can you answer that question for me?
The minutes that I got.
Yeah. I didn't bring life.
Yeah, we did.
What do we want?
Two minutes.
Yeah, we went to.
Well, we did.
We did.
Did you?
Yeah.
Who took the minutes for all that?
David Gordon.
David Gordon?
Yeah.
I haven't had time to drink.
Can you give that to me, Jim?
Okay, well, we will table.
I didn't pass that down.
Taking, uh, written, or it may be very, may have taken a few, yeah, some notes.
Okay, so we will table the minutes until the next meeting.
I made a motion we approve the agenda as amended.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
None.
Anyone close?
Yeah.
On the pending applications. RSU 21 M.L.A. School Expansion. Gentlemen, you are up.
Do you want another presentation?
I, I, do we need another presentation? Do we need, do we need anything else?
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I don't know what you.
Okay.
He basically said everything didn't.
I believe our, our help was in, which you think that the word was to actually have a public hearing on this, but the applicant was advised that it may not happen at this meeting, so we need to schedule a public hearing.
As a conditional use, it has that pending notification by the time I get.
Yeah.
I know.
We need, we need to.
Okay, I, I just, because this has determination of completeness. And you guys saw it last week and I did not.
Okay, basically, we had, we knew what was there, explained everything, what we had did on the sidewalk. We had answered all of our questions from the sidewalk, everything else, and had regrouped this picture from the sidewalk to presently what was here, which is the same picture which we had seen from the last meeting.
Okay.
And the board was satisfied, unless there were technical issues, the board was satisfied with what was presented at the last meeting.
At least they had submitted the documents.
Do we have a couple of questions?
That's okay.
Okay, so we, we have what we need to make a decision?
Yes, we have. We deem it complete.
Oh, you deem it complete?
Yes.
And that, that's my question, because this has determination of completeness.
Yeah.
Okay, I think what it should have been determined if we can set up a public hearing.
Right. Okay.
And address any outstanding issues.
Okay. Are there any outstanding issues that the board has that need to be addressed before a public hearing?
Again, I'm not sure how far Ted got into it, but one of the things that had come up was photometrics.
Yeah.
And you had indicated that the photometric was all in here, and it is. It's going to take some of the good to read it.
Well, Ted, you got a set of sets.
We got.
I have full size.
Actually, I couldn't. I can't even tell if there's any numbers in there.
Yeah, it's a dense point. Guys got a full set of full size?
Yeah. Okay.
I'm.
Uh, three.
Three.
Well, I only have one left there. We disseminated.
Not sure if you want us to review that, if you're going to do it.
I could do that. It all depends on how you want to proceed tonight. I had, I have made some notes, I've done some review of this, time allotted, and I could do that, or else John can make a presentation for you folks. Want to start, Will?
That sounds like a good spot as any.
Well, does anybody else on the board have any questions or concerns about the plan?
Okay. Yeah, I've, I've gone over a lot of this material. By the way, those are tough map boards to fold back into place, but the big sets, big maps, appreciate that. Yeah, I've reviewed a lot of the material, there's a tremendous amount of material in there, it's pretty well done. We do have some, some issues we do need to discuss, some concerns. I have put together some notes for you here. We do have, as you know, the use is, of course, a conditional use in that location, it's an existing use, this is an expansion of existing conditional use, it is a major application. They have right title and interest to the property, in fact, they divided the property, a part of the property, 9452 Atris, was conveyed by the town to the RSU directly in a quick claim. We have that, there's a property survey that's been done. Thank goodness for John, because there was one part that was missing that on the site plan where there is a strip, for those of you who might have asked the question.
It's actually highlighted here.
Yes, there we go, thank you. There's a strip of land that the, that the Turnpike owns that is basically parallels Limerick Road, and that makes, yes.
Parallels Limerick Road?
It's three acres. It extends along the Turnpike.
From down here, around here.
So there's a lot we've had in the past, which building permits were sought for, but it is, in fact, a lot of record, and it is taxed accordingly. So basically, my concern was, you know, setbacks here, and we were wondering why in the world we had this huge diversion in the, in the right-of-way line, and that's why, that's why we had that kink in there, and it comes in like this, and we have such a, what appears to be a narrow setback here. That is not a frontage, that is a side lot. So, so that issue was of concern, and that's been cleared up.
Why is that considered a side lot line?
Well, why is that considered the side lot line? Because this is actually a lot of record, and it's a lot.
Well, the yellow is actually right-of-way line of Limerick Road.
Yes, this is Limerick Road right here.
So you're not, since you're not on Limerick Road, you don't have furniture.
Yeah, the furniture is front. This point up to the river.
Right.
So there's, there's our furniture, we had added furniture. Other stream.
Stream. Done.
In calculating those acres, was that counted?
It was not counted in, in, in the town's conveyance. It's a mistake I, I made, I didn't see it on the, the survey, well, actually, I kind of did, but I didn't think of it as a separate lot. And then John brought to my attention that it is, in fact, a separate lot, and confirming the assessor, it is, in fact, a three-acre lot that is owned by the main Turnpike.
Okay, question on that basis.
Yes, sir.
If the main Turnpike ever does anything with it, are they subject to barriers or whatever? I was not, for noise? Because right now, it is not affecting anything, but turn out the future ever developments in your magic eight ball, okay? Where does that happen to be for the future?
Well, it's a good question, Marty, my magic eight ball always says ask it later.
Well, guess what?
What?
That's where we sort of still get, uh-huh, we'll put it on backburners and nothing gets done, or nothing is ever addressed.
Well, I think the lot, the lot is basically not really a buildable lot, no, it meets no setbacks, you can't do anything with it. It's actually probably a remnant when they did the, when they did the overpass. It's also an access point there to the Turnpike.
But they still can draw, why the road?
Yeah, they can always do that, Marty.
They can.
They don't make noise here.
But, you know, the, if the, the MTA has a, has an eminent domain capability anyway, so if they need to take that land, they will, their tendency is always to try to purchase.
Well, doesn't, doesn't the town have other domain capability? We can say.
That would be an interesting fight.
Well, you mean, if they take it and then we take it as the town, that would be an interesting idea.
Yeah, right now, though, it's a lot of record that they're paying taxes on it.
They're MTA, they're not paying taxes on it.
Apparently they are. They also have another piece of property on the other side, right by the landfill. It's actually a pretty interesting parcel of land that we wanted to actually acquire from the, for the purposes of maybe recreational facilities up near the, above the landfill. And that's all town land there, and we thought that'd be a great place for some, some parking, and they said, no, not interested, they're not interested in selling. So MTA jealous of our stuff.
Well, if they're not interested in selling, we can take care of that, just like they would.
That's right.
Probably, but it's probably beyond the scope of this meeting, I guess.
Well, it probably is.
Yeah, it is a little bit off.
Landfills and.
In any case.
Kind of landlines and so.
So anyways, that's why there's a side lot line in there, that's why it's so close.
Does it affect the project at all?
No, the project does.
Okay.
It's just a concern I brought up, and John clarified that for me, in case anybody else had wondered why the, the building was so close to the river, because I remember at the sidewalk, members had mentioned that, that geez, it's awfully close, you know, to the property, and I know why. Other things regarding it, you, I remember the board had, if I'm reiterating things you already know, please tell me, but the board had concerns about the site distances at both the south and north, and in the north. In fact, the matter is that according to Oral Palmer's study, we have site distance that exceeds 35 mile an hour, in fact, it even meets the 45 mile an hour standard.
That's really.
Good, because that's how fast they drive.
Looking from where?
It's really a perceptual thing, but it seems like less than it really is.
Yeah, it does, because that, that crown in the, in the.
And the curve on the other side.
Yeah, the other, yeah.
It's a dumpty dumpty flying over the hill.
But you can see around that tree in the corner you're talking about, so, so that's why you can get that type of.
Okay.
All right. So the, the entrance is good, there is no difference in the entrances, except that they are not drive-through anymore, they won't be separated, as you well know. It has the access for the, for the playground and the, and the, the existing building, as well as also access to the pump run and the fire department connection and the sister. I believe that you folks have talked to the fire chief about putting a filler connection on that pipe, so that's something that's between the fire department and the RSU, and they have, the fire department has given me a verbal of their fine route plan as it is. They assume no obstructions to any access and are pleased with, pleased with the, obviously, the sprinkling system.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Instead of verbal, can we get something ready?
I asked that for that, I will.
I will, I will.
Yeah.
Because talk is cheap.
I've asked that, and, and I am the C P, but I will press on that issue. The other, other issues, let's see, we have, we have the street entrances, obviously, you folks have a lot of concerns about the separation of buses and vehicles, different drop-offs, those drop-offs actually work very well with the bus loop, meets all the turn radius criteria, it's all of our criteria, so is the parking lot and, and the separate drop-off permit for students, private drop-off, which is in that area up there. Those meet all our standards, and so does the park, the parking meets our standards, the driveways meets our standards, it's all in compliance with 7.6.
Question.
Yes, sir.
On parking.
Yes, sir.
This is something I did not ask you, they have any dedicated area for motorcycle?
Yes.
We said, since, since we kind of went through that big issue in town, motorcycling or anything else, do we have any dedicated possibly areas for motorcycle?
Not dedicated for motorcycles, ordinary parking spaces.
But you know, normally, a normal parking space takes up to two, two to three motorcycles.
However, well, Marty, these, most of these kids do drive.
Yes, but I'm not talking about the kids.
I know.
You know, the big kids.
Staff, you're talking about the staff. They have more than adequate parking right now for the anticipated staff and support personnel.
Just, just throwing it out as a question.
Parking that's actually more for students, for families and for municipal and all the other community uses that.
Yeah, my daddy might pick up Sally, little Sally, on a motorcycle.
And they're going to have to fight over a space.
Yes.
You know, if he's polite, he'll park it such a way another motorcycle can pull in next.
You'd be there when I heard it.
No, that's okay, I mean, I'll let that one go, I'll let nature take its course with that one. So internal vehicle circulation, I believe, John, you were very concerned about that, are you satisfied with that, how it works right now?
Yeah, I, I think it's a little tight in the parking area, but the lanes, I think, are wide enough. I was concerned with, you know, parking and then backing out while vehicles were traveling around the loop, but I think the lanes are wide enough to accommodate.
Twenty-four foot lanes.
Yeah.
So it should be, with eighteen-foot spaces, it should be plenty of space.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I don't have a big concern, looking at the map, it was a concern, but I think it's okay.
Yeah, and the new drop-off area changes that whole dynamic. Yeah, because though, instead of going through the center, they'll come around, they have made a drop-off spot. I mean, we had one at the Crown, that would have been different. Yeah, we wish it.
Okay. All right, light lighting was another issue that Bob was concerned about, and, and the rest of the board had, if you did look, and I'm sorry that you had the small map, I have a big map, one meter or four. The photometric study, basically the LED lights, those were in your packets, so you took a look at those and you rose up what's where. The photometrics on that basically showed that we're going to have zero lumens falling on all of the property, basically anywhere on the west side of this, nothing that's falling on the road, and nothing that falls on the adjacent properties.
There was, correct me if I'm wrong, there was a introduction that said that there would not be any more than 0.5 lumens casting on the neighbor.
Well, that's the standard, but we have zero.
Yeah, we do have zero.
You need that.
There's only one concern, one question.
Okay, I, I caught somewhere in those little numbers that I couldn't read, there, there was one area that was gone.
That's the standard, you know, that's minimum acceptable allowable acceptable, oh, we have zeros, which is better.
I didn't look, but I have a question, turn around, for entrance.
In the main entrance?
The main entrance.
Yes, sir.
For not during school time or anything else, or like for activities like this or anything else, how much illumination is there going to be for the entrance so you aren't driving by at night or anything else?
You have no fixtures there.
Um, let me try to see if we can get a CMP pole at the corner of the drive, so I can put a pole-mounted light at the drive.
I mean, I'm just.
That's a valid point, see if we can get some additional lighting at the drive.
And also exit too.
You guys going to pay for that? You guys going to pay for that?
Yes.
Okay, you might want to put your own light in.
Yes.
Over the lawn, then do anything with CMP Cobra.
Would be our whole anyways.
Yes.
Okay.
You are the lighting guy.
That could be.
You're right, it is, it is, let's see, I had. Let's see, other, other issues, grading and storm drainage. The site is going to be relatively flat, the grading plan is pretty solid, the grading plan. The stormwater drainage is complex. Frankly, it's above my pay grade, so you guys, do you have to get stormwater from D E P?
Set location.
I saw that in set location, but do they also record it stormwater?
Yeah, stormwater is a part of the location.
So, question is, do you want to take D E Ps or do you want our engineer also to look at it?
I have a, I have a related question before I answer that.
Okay.
We, we exceeded impervious area.
Yeah, I was going to get to that.
On this. Why didn't that come out of the original stud, I mean, stormwater, it should have shown very clearly to us?
Well, I, I don't know how to answer that, but I think when you do a stormwater study, there, look, there is an increase in impervious surface on this property, no question, because we have an increase in the building, actually, we have an increase in the parking lots.
That's what the building states saying, what we're taking down is what going up is about the same.
It's about the same, so it's really the parking lot, the circulation, we're getting additional, we have what, about 9.9 acres more in impervious surface according to your site plan, which is a lot. I didn't pull.
I think it was, I don't think it's 9.9, but it's probably an acre. Yeah, it was, that's all about an acre.
Yeah, it was about an acre, that's right, it was 0.9, I'm sorry, it was about 0.9.
Nine acres.
No, it wasn't nine acres, it was about an acre more impervious surface. So, and that, and that, what you're talking about, Bob, and that is one of the glitches that, that we did find, is that the land that's been conveyed to the RSU is 9.59 acres that the town conveyed from a larger parcel, and the whole parcel was, was actually about 25 acres, and that's why, actually, my sighting of this is wrong, because we still show in the assessor's map as one parcel, and it's not, it's two parcels. And you can see the property line is shown, yeah, right up here, property line is shown here, where the town of Rundle is this, and by quick claim, the town of Arundel gave the RSU this amount, okay? So when they did the, when, when anybody did, when these guys did the stormwater study, they didn't care about how much acreage it was, what they were looking at was, A, how much increase runoff, the peak runoff we're going to produce, and how much runoff the general we're going to produce more, how are we going to control it, how are we going to discharge at a rate that's equal to current conditions? That's what they were looking at doing. The, the issue that's come up that we have realized is that, as you know, in the R2 district, the maximum building coverage is 20%.
Yeah.
Okay, and 20% of 25 acres wasn't a problem. However, we have an increase, quite frankly, 20% of the 9.59 acres right now has made the existing building non-conforming, and the increase has made it even more non-conforming, so we're well over 20%.
So, are we talking about building or impervious?
Impervious, lot coverage is all impervious surface, if you look in the definition.
Okay, so that's what I'm, that's how I read it, when you said building.
I wasn't making a difference. It's all impervious surface, so.
Nothing we can do about the existing, but it's expanding a non-conforming type of ratio.
Yeah, I think, well, the town, the conveyance has basically created a non-conforming situation.
As soon as that was conveyed, it was already.
It was made non-conforming, and the improvements that they, they proposed to make, make it even more non-conforming, and that has to be remedied before you make final decisions.
Is that something we can remedy?
No.
So.
This is going to have to be done.
So the property line that follows, I, I assume it follows the stream down, down through there?
Yeah, it's the little stream.
That was just, just designated in the last few months.
It was conveyed in August of this year.
That also brings up another question about that, that now is landlord law, do we, what about easement to town, two different property.
There was a conveyance of easement to all of it.
Okay.
It was easing back and forth.
What will that have on this standing from the, from the board of select within the RSU as to the use of that property?
That's already on record?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
We, we don't have it in the assessor's office.
So Dr. Crowley, can.
We've just created an illegal lot, too.
Can you explain that, what that, that restriction was on the use of the property?
All I know is, I believe the agreement is, the town of Arundel may use that property as they've been using it, unless the RSU for some reason decides to sell it or something like that. I, I, I'm far better off telling you the actual letter agreement.
The, the reason I asked that question was Ted wondering if, because this is a, this is a newly developed situation, and then created between the town and the RSU, probably because they didn't, just weren't paying attention to the lot coverage number.
No.
Is there a remedy other than, other than conveying property, can the, the RSU dedicate a certain amount of that land in perpetuity regardless of sale that would stay in non-impervious surfaces?
Well, what they, unless we change the definition of lot coverage, this parcel needs more acreage, period.
They need more.
Can we sell back two acres back to RSU?
I was just trying to think of something easier than, but that might not be.
I tried, I spent part of the afternoon trying to figure out a better way of doing it, and, and right now, I'm not, without confirming with attorneys, I have, well, I don't have any other better solution.
So we should, there, there's many ways to solve this, I think we, we should just proceed forward.
Right.
Select and deal with.
Yeah, I, I agree that there are many ways to solve this, but we can't solve it.
No.
And until it gets solved, it's, from my point of view, this thing's dead in the water, we can't do anything with it.
I mean, you can get through all of the rest.
Right, I, I think we can look at everything else.
But it's not complete.
It's, it's, it's not a complete application, we don't have.
It's complete, it's just.
Might be some issues.
If, if, if we deem that this is complete, if we deem that this is complete, then we have to reject it because we can't solve that problem.
So we've.
That, that's, I don't know what else to do.
They've submitted the documents, we can review all of the documents, this is a question that's in here, we have 45 days after, we're going to have to work fast.
Well, we, if, if I could clarify the timetable, 45 days is for holding the public hearing. Unlike the site plan, and I appreciate that they filled out both conditional use and site plan, but we're going to consider this a conditional use, because it is a conditional use. Under conditional use standards, there is no maximum deadline for a decision by the planning board. Under site plan, there is, there's 45 days.
Forty-five days.
For, for decision, it's 45 days to hold a public hearing under conditional use. So that's, so 45 days, our next meeting would be the 12th of November, and that would be less than 45 days. But if you still hold a public hearing, and there's no requirement that we have to act, then especially by time.
Many of them have been waiting to its results.
So I would give the town and the RSU an opportunity to do some work on this while we continue to do some reviewing, get prepared for the public hearing.
But do we, do we want to have a public hearing and, and say to the, to the town when they show up, thank you for coming, but we really can't make a decision, we can't do anything on this because, because of this particular issue? Wouldn't it make more sense, in my opinion, it would make more sense to wait and have the public hearing once the issue gets resolved?
I don't, I, I don't see this as any different than somebody having a question about lighting or drainage or anything else, it's a technical issue that we've got to resolve, the applicant has to resolve.
Correct.
And, and under normal circumstances, I think it would be much more difficult, but where this is a, a very recent conveyance of this property out, the two parties seem to have worked well together in that, I don't foresee it as being a showstopper, so.
I, I, I don't know if it will be or not, but in the past, whenever we've come across an issue of lighting or, or stormwater management or whatever, we've always waited before we held a public hearing. We've had those issues resolved so that, so that the only thing we would be addressing is whether or not something comes up at the public hearing.
Well, one, one, it's a public hearing, so we're going to hear from the public any issues and concerns, then as for it, it's our option, we have an option of making that determination in it, but we don't have to, and if things are out for that one thing, we, we can wait until the two parties get it resolved? That's an option.
It is.
It, I, I, it is.
We had also sometimes a long way, when we were doing different ones, where we had example of conveyance for lots, or whatever, outside, and that was all done before final approval. But the division of changing the road or anything else, which I'm just speaking of recently, was all done before final approval was made.
Oh.
We also have public hearing in between then.
Yeah.
I, I don't see any reason why we can't have a public hearing.
That's what I'm saying.
I'd like to make a motion that we schedule a date for a public hearing.
I'll second that.
Well, we need to have.
We have the next first.
If we're gonna have a motion to have a public hearing, you need to put a date on it, okay?
No, but we also have to deem this.
November 12.
We've already given this.
It was deemed complete at the last meeting, so I make a motion, we have a public hearing scheduled for November 12.
Second that.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded to have a public hearing on November 12. Any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor?
You have ten days to, three weeks.
Yeah, you have plenty of time to get it approached. Okay?
I'm just trying to think timelines.
Comment, John?
No.
Nope, okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed?
I would like to go.
It's unanimous.
I would like to go back to Ted's original question about stormwater management, did we wanted to go to our engineers' peer review and/or accept the DEP and their recommendations?
I, I think in the past, projects at this scale, this scale.
We've had our engineers.
We've had our engineer review it. This is.
Pretty big project.
It's a big project, yeah. Especially.
I guess it bring, I'm just bringing it up for discussion.
Especially the density of, of the, of the impervious surfaces, quite a bit of acreage there, so I'd be more comfortable having an engineer review it.
Make it his a motion.
I'll make a motion that, I'll make a motion that we, we have the town engineer review the stormwater.
A ma- a motion has been made and seconded to have the town engineer review the stormwater. Any other questions?
Quite yes.
Marty?
Does that have to be an answer before the public hearing?
No.
No? I guess, just before final approval.
Before final approval.
Okay.
Okay? Any other discussion? All those in favor? No opposed, unanimous. Okay. I don't think there's anything else.
Ted, Ted, landscape plan that you wanted to discuss, I believe.
Uh, yeah.
Why, they got notes that affect that.
Yes. Uh, the landscape plan, basically, they have a landscape plan, uh, the landscaping plan is, is an understated plan, most of it involves, obviously, lawn, in order to, both for drainage purposes and also because of maintenance. They, uh, the applicant is proposing to put trees in the parking lot area on aisles, and, um, and they, they show basically eight, uh, maybe red maple trees, a columnar variety called Autumn, uh, there's Autumn Sunset. Very nice tree, actually, in case you're wondering, it's the same tree that's in front of Motorname. Those are Autumn Sunsets down there, in case you need something. They're a good columnar tree, they're, they're pretty good in the, in a parking lot, the only thing is, depends how much the RSU's gonna use calcium chloride, because they don't react well to calcium chloride.
Plowing too.
Uh, well, you don't have to hit them.
You'll begin the eye.
But, but Marty's right from plowing. You've got the calcium ore in the snow, and plowing up against it, you don't, they don't react well to that.
Yeah, turn it when you're banking, you still turn it.
And then, and, and actually, they have a way of getting it in some of the snow, I mean, uh, if you plow with the, with the direction, you can plow it into your stormwater.
Well, you tell the snow about that.
Here inside there, where the building was.
Yeah, why don't you show us that?
Good place for storms to occur here.
And if you need to, you can also push it down towards the, the speed up.
Push it up from the one. They also have the center of the bus loop in the area over by the service shop, it's also available for sale.
You write that for plowing instructions down there.
Well, yes, it's gonna take a more delicate. And then there's also, uh, to meet our buffer requirements for loading areas, they're also using, um, um, basically a white spruce in here. The only thing I mentioned about the white spruce is they have a tendency with age to die underneath, and you have to limb them up, and eventually their effectiveness is not that great, but it's better than the hemlocks, which die from the woolly.
Norway spruce?
No, God, no, jeez, please.
Well, hey, taxpayers gotta pay this, you know.
No, those things go to ninety feet, again, they'll kill us, you know? Those are ninety feet tall, they're awful. They're great trees for a lawn, but for, no, I mean, it's just something to think of, I, I don't wanna say.
Why don't you just put Rosa Gosa there?
Our varieties would probably work the best, they're just so overused, I know, they make me cringe, too.
Rosa Gosa.
That's not a tall one, remember, you got residences right across the street, that's why they don't, I mean, we could give it a shot, you know, see how they go. Probably have to top them at some point, so they don't get too tall, and that'll make a rush.
We don't have them there now.
And the only other thing I wanted to ask, um, maybe you guys should maybe think about maybe the spreading tree here, because you got this nice little lawn area, it's kind of focal point. I have plenty of, you know, Supora, you know, scholar trees, just because of the name. It's a, it's a good tree. We used that, but you wouldn't want, just not a requirement, just a thought. The only other question I asked is, although we know these are iconic views in here, we have, we have a lot of, we basically have this whole facade that's facing the residents here. And, um, just wondering, you know, I was gonna suggest we put several trees in here, it's pretty close to the building, and I understand why there's no desire to put anything big in there, but, um, just as a buffer, or a continuation of that tree line over the street. Although, this, these are big, you don't want them that big.
Right, yeah, those something, those down here.
But something to continue that, that, that sense of a tree line, just some sort of vegetative separation.
After twenty foot.
Yeah, you can put, yeah, actually, you can put in west side, you know, help with the sun. You could probably put in some, some smaller trees, twenty footers, under twenty footers, put in, well, I guess we're not gonna put all the hawthorns with the kids, but, you know, perhaps something like that, or smaller, smaller.
Little red buds.
Yeah, well, those, those have technically very columnar, they don't spread out very much.
Yeah, but they aren't that hardy to drive for breakage.
Yeah, but we don't have the kind of winds that, that, that they really suffer on, like, along the seashore.
Yeah, but, but, you know, the snow and everything else, they aren't that strong.
That's gonna be.
I, I have a, I have a question about trees, I think something, honestly, we don't have that many trees out there.
Why do we need trees?
There's a bunch of them at the far end of the parking lot, but there's not a whole lot of them in front of the school right now. Well, I don't know why we would wanna put them in there. It hasn't been a problem.
So, it does hide the building?
The building, well, it's not hiding. Yeah, it's not hiding the building.
But what it does is it just provides just a.
Makes it more, it's more aesthetic, it's, it's, it's on the people that happen to live there, not have to stare at the side of the building. Well, most people who live there, they're looking at it up, like, what do you think now? Why turn and hide it?
Well, that was my thought, Marty, because I'm looking at the building now.
If you looked at the elevations, it's a very nice building, it's just the.
Then leave it alone.
Obviously, there's debate in the most.
Leave it alone.
We've heard from one, how about the rest of you?
I, I'm fine with the way the building looks, and if you wanna put trees in, I'm fine with you putting trees, it just, I just don't understand why you would.
Correct. Because we didn't, because we didn't necessarily want them.
From that point of view, I'm perfect.
I'm fine with.
Okay, there's three, one more, make it four. But, uh, yeah, I don't know, if you, if you drive by, focal point of the school is now going to be really to the rear, and that's gonna be the main entrance.
Particularly with parking and all that activity within the building, so this is gonna be a very quiet side of the building, because all the activities now, you're outside.
Yeah, it's gonna be quieter. And the, um, the gym was actually gonna be behind existing vegetation anyways, the triangle up front, which stayed vegetated.
That little bit of slot there, half of that's gonna be.
Just take a couple of, if you wanna do brachial chair.
Yeah, a couple of pit trees wouldn't be bad.
Okay, we'll put in a couple of brachials in.
Cleveland's light will be better, it's firm enough, it'll be a little tougher than the guy that's ahead.
Okay, would you just give me the, just so people can know all the stuff about it?
Three years, okay.
Okay, is there anything else?
Uh, let's see. One, one question I have about the sideline, I could talk to you later, but it showed zero lumens, but you have lights here at this, in the west entrance and southwest entrance?
They're full cut off.
Are they full cut off of the recessed in?
I believe so.
Okay, 'cause you got no registering at all. It came out of zero, and I'm going, why do we have a fixture and there's no registering of even one?
It's just under canopy, it's, it's very, the LEDs are very highly capable, you can control the light with a green.
Okay, so five feet out, that's why you didn't do that.
That's what I agree. All those numbers are zeros.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else?
Uh, let's see. Soil erosion control looks pretty good today. The issue is drainage. I don't have any other issues to say.
Okay. There you go, we're all set for a site walk, November, uh, site walk, uh, public hearing November 12.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
You have your other work to do.
Yeah, I'm glad we have to deal with the town.
Ted has, everybody here, have you all signed in on something?
No.
Yeah, there was, there was a sheet that was. Don't, they want me to, three, a double.
I have my doubt. Is anybody else, you, you. Inside, sir? Okay, item number two, motor land. Revision of a plenary site plan permit, proposal to subdivide the former county connection complex into two lots, removing the parking area and lighting fixtures of the display parking lot located on an eight point nine four acre parcel at point five sixty-four Orton Road, tax map two, lot one, UBI district, Neil Griffith, a terrible name of the applicant and the owner. Anyway, boss.
All right, I had Jane in lighting do a lighting study here, and Wood has come up with, uh, I don't know, does everybody have this, by the way?
Yes. Attached to your notes.
We start at the front light, um, one of the fixtures will be removed, and the other angled, the second one going back, one will be removed, angled, and the third one in the very back corner.
These lights are all along the front?
No, they're along, they're along the side.
Oh, okay.
Of the divided.
Right, where the conveyance.
Yeah, right, right.
So, repeat that for me, please?
Yeah, so if we start from the front on Portland Road, and you can see that green line?
You're right.
That, that line represents that, that buffer.
And does it say delete one of two fixtures?
That says delete one of two fixtures and angle the other. Uh, the second one back says, uh, delete one of two fixtures and angle. And the third one back, um, is just completely, um, remove the fixture.
Whole pole or?
Just a fixture.
Okay.
Yeah. Whole fixture can be reused, so no sense in this. And that puts us under the point five, point five.
Now, refresh my memory, what did you guys decide at the last meeting? What was the decision that you made?
We're not gonna do a cycle.
We didn't decide anything.
Oh, okay.
We were just looking at possibilities. And one of the possibilities, and maybe Ted can answer this, since that, you know, this is, this is really complicated because of a few feet on that parking lot.
Right.
And the specification is that you have two hundred foot frontage.
Correct.
One of the things that we discussed was a possibility of running that line on the other side of the parking lot, and then at an angle, they give you the two hundred foot frontage, just a bit of a simple.
Still gonna need fifteen foot setback.
Yeah. How deep does that frontage need to go? Two hundred feet, can it be just fifteen feet?
Two hundred feet, that's, it doesn't say that to be two hundred fifty.
So, that's my question, so two hundred feet, why, along the road?
It'll be two feet deep.
Definitely.
No, it doesn't.
Well, because it, it's so complicated with the easement and everything else, we thought there might just be a simple solution.
Yeah, but.
I think we looked at that originally.
Yeah, there was, the applicant was gonna come back and tell us which direction that they chose, because there was a question, if you move that over, does the next property not have enough, so they were gonna do that report.
No, not the next property, but.
Yeah, the one that's being bed off, yeah, they may not have enough frontage now.
No, no, the, the, that front pin was, what we talked about, that front pin would stay the same, that point would stay the same, so that they had two or one, but what we talked about was coming back, wondering if they could come back ten feet, jog it out and around up.
And come back ten feet this way?
Well, the most way back to the property, like upward to.
In here, in order to be able to encompass the whole parking lot of the property.
Oh, there was three hundred and ninety-nine.
So, they made that up to the end.
Yeah, right, that was, I mean, if, they're comfortable with easements and, you know, all that stuff, then, you know.
The other, the, the other item was that the board kind of said that we went and agreement, that if they installed that six foot fence, stockade, that we felt that it was consistent with the order. My reading of your documents made that six foot fence mandatory in order for the lighting plan to work, am I correct in how I read all of that?
That's what that green, that's what that green, um, line signifies about that.
And there's that, that fence actually aids in the immediate.
I talked to Jim.
We did good, that's all I'm saying, we did good. We don't keep this to ourselves.
Can I ask a clarifying question, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Height of the required fence? Six feet?
No.
It doesn't say five here.
Did you have eight feet originally?
Well.
The height will depend upon the lighting, actually.
Yeah, but Dave said.
The what?
Jim used eight.
Jim used eight, right.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Well, you got some people that turn on college and. I think we, yeah, but I think we require six foot, I think your lighting might require a short ship.
Yeah, the lighting.
So, in order to meet that, you'd have to go to the eight, and that, that's, that's because of the other protection. You agree with that?
Well, it all depends upon the lighting plan, right, and how, how that light gets shed over on that side.
Well, and that's what you use eight in the model, so I think we wanna be consistent.
Yeah, and the, the engineer's review said specifically that this was dependent upon the installation of.
Okay, so the question, the question becomes, if, if you're looking at putting in an eight foot stockade fence.
Right.
That satisfies the lighting requirement, that takes care of the entire issue, from your point of view, it satisfies us on our point of view.
From buffering.
From buffering.
It's an alternative to buffering. I believe you did that in the dentless.
Yeah, we did, and so now the question becomes, do we wanna have a public hearing on this? Or, or a site walk?
Is that the only outstanding issue?
I think that, that was the only issue that we were discussing.
That's it.
Yeah, I think the rest.
Well, the, the other outstanding issue was how that lot was gonna be, um, laid out, but if you chose this particular situation, then that's fine, and that's really the only questions we had.
Right.
Well, I almost agree, and I have a question about the pavement, does that, is there any issue with, with the pavement that's extending it to another property?
That's what they have the easement for.
They have an easement to preserve that.
Right.
Otherwise, the deal would be.
That way they have access on both sides of the fence.
Well, I guess I wondered, could the, were the new one, just, just dig it up?
No, they have the.
That's what you do in the easement, maintain the fence.
To maintain the fence.
Well, actually, the fence is off the property.[1798.62]
No.
But it's in the easement.
It's on you, where you look, where the asphalt is.
No, it's, it's in, it's set in.
The asphalt, the fence is set in on the asphalt. So you turn it on the other side.
It's not on the property line, it's, it's set in from the side in towards Mortal Land side.
Right.
Correct, but you know, the other side of the fence is still asphalt. So it gives them the access for the easement to maintain the fence on the other side. So you still have a ladder to turn it on.
Right, and that was, that was my observation at the last meeting. That was kind of odd and rather about way to do things, but wasn't it a simpler way? But that's up to the applicant. And as long as the easements are in place and they're happy with it, that's fine.
Unusual.
I think it would, it, it might actually benefit them in the future if they decide that they, for whatever reason, they want to buy that other piece of property, at least they won't have to pay it again. That's right, just take the fence off and there we go.
Just understand, can the fence be on the property line or does it have to be?
Has to be set back, doesn't it?
Has to be set back to the property line, so to maintain it.
But they've got an easement around.
They have the easement, so it's set on the property line and they have maintenance on the other side, which the asphalt is to maintain it.
The photometric should give you, I don't have mine because I didn't have that in mind, but not only the installation of this fence, but they took it at a specific location. And that, so it's got to be in accordance with that.
Well, I think they probably modeled it on the property line. And my take is if it was six inches different, it wouldn't be a huge issue with the photometrics.
Yeah, I, I agree with Bob. If the plan is showing it where the fence is located here, if they, if you do it more way, I think we shouldn't, we might need to have a new plan, unfortunately. On the other hand, you're, you're probably gaining 12 parking spots along there if you set it...
They aren't trying to gain spots.
No, why not?
They aren't trying to gain parking spots. They're just trying to turn it, divide it so they can get on with it.
Well, if you're, you're selling cars, I think a parking spot, each one is worth something.
Ask them, last time we discussed it and it wasn't an issue.
I'm not gonna ask them that, I'm just saying it would gain probably a dozen parking spots, that's all I'm saying.
And that's what they proposed and as long as it meets our ordinance, then...
They have, they have done what needs to be done and it meets the ordinance. So the question, when should, do we schedule a public hearing for this revision?
Well, one of the things we, we requested was we were under a timeframe for this to close because there's a 10/31 exchange and it has to happen.
Oh, yeah, 10/31? You're, you're running close on your 10/31 dates, aren't you?
This is scheduled to close November 12th.
November 12th? Which is that, we could do a site walk and, and have the hearing afterward and determine whether or not this is acceptable. Well, not the site walk, the public hearing, sorry. We can do the public hearing that day and, and then make a decision. But if he's doing a 10/31, we have to do it on December 12th, uh, November 12th because they have no time and it's a huge tax implication to them.
Well, Mr. Taxman, can't you get an extension for that?
No, you cannot. It is cast in stone, you have X number of days to do it.
That's why, that's why... That's why at the last meeting, we were trying to see if we could turn it, do a site walk and everything else before this meeting.
We, we could do an earlier site walk, but when's the next?
November 12th is the next meeting.
We've all done the...
I mean, what's, what is the site walk required for this? I mean, to me, it seems to be...
We all get motors on.
Right, we've all driven by, we're familiar, the, the property adjacent to it is...
They're not changing the land.
Right, they put the fence up.
Yeah.
My, my recommendation would be that we have a public hearing on the 12th and we put it on the agenda immediately afterwards so that they can close and get it taken care of.
Well, what would it night?
Would you be able to do that at night?
Pardon?
Would you be able to close after the meeting at night?
No.
What is, what's the criteria there, you actually have to close?
You have to close within 60 days, is it? I don't remember the exact number of days, because you have a very short window. You have to identify the property that you want to do the exchange with, find the replacement property and close.
Yeah, that's why we brought this up last meeting and you guys know, you all decided that there didn't need a public hearing. And that's why we came back with the lighting plan.
And, and, and we may not need a public hearing, you know? Because it's just a revision.
It's a lot, it's a lot split and it's Ted putting up a fence.
So that, and the question that...
Do we need a public hearing?
Do, that's one thing, and whether we, if we didn't, can we move forward on this tonight?
Yeah, we could move forward on it tonight without a public hearing because we've accepted the plan, we've accepted the way it is. We could say yes, go ahead and do it. Or we can say we want a public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we do not schedule a public, we don't need a public hearing on this. It's just putting up a fence. So no, no land change at all.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to forego the public hearing. Any discussion?
Well, I do have to point out that this breaks precedent. The board has a public hearing pretty much on every application like this. So, um, I know we're trying to accommodate the applicant and we try as a board to accommodate as much as possible. I just want to point out that, in my mind, it breaks precedence.
It probably does, but I think it would be a burden on the applicant and unfair of us to penalize them because we won't be able to get it done in time.
Well, we're not penalizing.
You agree?
Well, you, you can say we're not penalizing, but I'm, I would take the position that we would be because of the, the situation that's involved.
By following normal procedure, we are not penalizing.
Yeah, I, I disagree with, I think we're moving forward as we would normally and it's, it was, it's unusual.
If we're moving forward as we would normally, we would have the site plan. And, and the reason that we don't want to have the site plan is because they're gonna lose...
You have a public hearing that's like...
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Questions, if we cannot have another meeting.
It is.
Have a, have a public hearing and before the 12th.
So we're looking at...
But today's the 42nd.
The 5th of November would be, I think, the next.
That's what I'm saying, that way it gives them...
Well, I think the biggest difference here in almost every other proposal that we have, there's construction involved, there's setbacks involved, there's all sorts of, really a lot of technical issues that the board has to, to go through. Um, there's no change in use, no change in, in property, no change in how it's going to be seen other than the requirement that we initiated for the buffering that's up this split and, and, and in accordance with our ordinance. So I feel comfortable moving, moving forward.
I'd just like to add, if I could, and I'm, I'm struggling with that. I don't want to break precedent, I don't want to be, by being over fair to this app, anywhere, in fact, we're being unfair to all the others, so I don't want to do that. But if I think of all the properties that have been subdivided, I don't think we've done public hearings on just a division of property.
It's a business.
If it's just...
When we are, even when we did it down...
Let me finish, let me finish, I don't want to get sidetracked with my thoughts. If, um, because there's no proposal for any earth moving, any construction, any, any curb cut, it's just a property line that, that we're, that we're proving here. So in that sense, I think that's not quite the same as what we had, our public hearings for in the past.
Marty?
When we generally did same thing, someone was done. I was trying to, it was the fact that when we had the property on the his son there, where it was the zone or everything else, and we were moving it, we still had a public hearing.
And they did give us a zoning...
Right, certain things.
Because of the zoning that caused it. Marty, how, how do you feel about it?
I, I think if, if we can accommodate them to, before they can get their date time, if we need to turn it, uh, come the 5th to do it, let's do it. And that way we still stay precedent and they have enough time to make their date.
Okay, Jamie?
I'm comfortable with my second thing and, and not requiring a public hearing.
And, and the reason I'm asking is because the motion is to not have the public hearing. So I just want to get a sense of where the board stands.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I'll go the same way. Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Even though I made the motion, I, I like my recommendations for, even though we don't do it too often, do that extra, uh, meeting for half hour, 20 minutes. Might be able to accommodate everything.
Yes, Mr. Planer?
It's time to be Mr. Cold Shower here.
That's what we're hiding for.
That's right. Do it well. In a plenary site plan review procedure, even though this is a, this is a modification of an existing site plan, there is only a provision, basically, that, um, it says, "Public hearing within 30 days will designate a plenary site plan review application. Reapplication, playboard shall, shall conduct the public hearing."
Shall conduct, we have no choice.
So would you have to do it on the 5th?
Withdraw your motion?
I have to, because it was...
It would be, the motion is ruled not in order because we have no choice. Roberts rules.
Under...
Do we have enough time?
Under plenary site plan review is in Ted, with the town, not the board. I mean, it's a, it's a...
Plenary is the board.
Plenary is, yeah.
So we can have a meeting on the 5th?
We can have a meeting on the 5th.
Where is the next motion? I don't think.
We're, we're gonna have to have a motion on that.
Girl Scouts have this room on the 5th.
Can we do it at the fire station?
We'll ask the chief.
Okay.
It's a, it's a short meeting.
Yeah.
You guys have had...
We have had outside meetings.
It's a precedent.
But it was nice that...
It was a nice day. At that time, it was, it was dark, we can't see anything.
I'm bringing flashlights.
I'll ask the town planner if he just checked the, the fire department and see if we can have a meeting in there on the 5th.
So should we move to have it on the 5th?
We should.
Yes, so I'll move, hold that public hearing.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
No.
Motion's been made and seconded to have the public hearing on November 5th at the fire station, followed immediately by a quick meeting of the planning board. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah.
All who's opposed, motion's unanimous.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I still don't think we needed to do that, though. This isn't, I, I, it's not a full application, it's just a modification. That's what the argument was.
Yeah.
I go with the board.
So we've covered our base and moved, and now we've definitely established precedent. Okay, we will see you on the 5th over at the fire station.
Do we have a time?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask just one guidance question? In addition to this plan, with the work you have, Ted and Jim on a, a construction to put a warehouse.
Completely separate at another point in time.
I'm trying to understand how your timing works. So in November, for example, were you have two meetings scheduled, the second Thursday, the last Thursday's Thanksgiving.
Right, so we, we won't have a meeting then, we'll have the, the one regularly scheduled on the 12th and then the next will, I think it's the 12th of December.
And I will be pitching to you guys to have a third meeting or second meeting in both months because you have a deadline on zoning, did you have to do that?
And zoning?
Yeah. We have to get the, uh, we have to get the, um, framework done for the, the planning.
So we could, we could schedule one in, one in November and one in December and do nothing but do...
But to answer his question, he still could go ahead and submit a, an application or a plan.
Oh, yes.
Not anytime before this public hearing. So you can get things started or in the works.
In, in order to get it through, you need to give it to the town planner 14 days before the meeting.
He can do it before he owns the property?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we are just, the, the reason I needed this guidance is we were meeting with Ted and correctly from one, you said, we would need three meetings to, to, to go through the process.
Two meetings if everything's perfect.
Okay, so we were just, the way we're, because we're trying... We were trying to...
That means if you guys...
Aaron, too, it would be only three.
I, I understand, I understand, but we were just trying to, to, to plan because if we could, we'd like to get the site work and the foundation in before the ground freezes. Understand that it's out. So we have been working based on the published schedule. So just some feedback, it would be helpful if you don't have it, you know, another meeting in November.
If you can get that information to Ted for the 29th of this month, you can get on for the 12th of November, that's the 14-day window.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you guess what? We have, he's gonna have right title on interest the 5th. So I mean, uh...
PNS, yeah, we probably have right title on interest for the 5th. You probably submit a PNS, believe, okay?
Pardon you?
Purchase and sale, dude.
It is have the homics to be in front of.
Right, he didn't have the home.
That's what I'm saying, so he could submit.
Well, he's gotta show, purchase and sell, he needs to know.
In order to stand it on the agenda for the 12th, he has to submit by the 29th because it's a 14-day window.
But he has a right title, he's a purchase and sale guy.
Today wasn't the window, this next Thursday is the window.
Pardon?
Next Thursday is when I had to...
Right.
That's when...
We told us this morning, it was the day.
Yeah, I did, and Paul came in and went over the calendar and he said, the 12th. I don't know because it's a good...
Fifth Thursday in November.
Pardon?
We have five Thursdays in November, so that messed up Ted's internal calendar.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much, Gerald.
Thank you. Is it good?
Wow.
It's good?
Yeah.
Skiing accident, right?
I wish, it was, uh, you know, tipped over, little picket wire fence, my garden fence, my wife's garden fence.
A garden, that's so less.
Yeah, I did my foot in a cobblestone and it took my right foot 90 degrees.
I'd come up with something about...
Yeah, I know, I know, I have.
Saving the kids from a terrorist or something. Next item. 784 Alfred with site plan reapplication. Proposal to convert a residential building under construction to a 3,012 square foot commercial service structure containing a serve pro business located on 1.77 acre parcel at 784 Alfred Road, tax map four, lot 32 in the AR district. Matt and Lisa True are the owner applicants.
Richard, can I point out, um, at the last meeting, we made changes just to that statement, actually. I think it's 782 Alfred Road, I think.
Oh.
Yeah, Ted had it done, it was, uh, actually, on our folders, it's wrong on the...
Well, you didn't review the...
Hey, this is no secretary stuff, it's working out pretty well, don't you think?
Yeah.
Hey, right about the point. We have, we have a select one here, we can...
Get him to take that.
Yeah. We probably get somebody to replace it really quickly, that way.
It was 2,120.
2,120.
It might hold up this project, I guess we get a secretary real quick.
I gotta pay a little.
Ten points! There you go, so, welcome up.
You're up. Okay. Change is noted, thank you.
So when we met as a board at the last meeting, we listened to the applicant and were willing to work with the applicant in terms of setbacks and screening, but I think we made it clear, by reading your notes, I'm not sure that, that you got the gist of that. I think the board made it clear that we did have, or they did have to meet all of the various requirements for commercial, if that's where they were going. So, um, and it seemed like, like they were in the process of that. So it seemed, your notes seemed to specify that it did not currently meet commercial standards and that there had to be some modifications to do that.
That's what I was gonna tell you about the CEO, yes. So as long as that's understood, that we can't act until, you know, we have some certification from the CEO that the building is, is or will be converted, you know. We could continue to work with them on this, but they're, that, they need, you folks need to know that upfront. The board alone could deal with this as a commercial structure.
We didn't make it clear that we were willing to think about, you know, the setback problems and all of that and, and the screening, but other than that, we had to meet the criteria.
So why, why does our review, why is our review impacted by building code issues?
The only, the only thing about it is, is if the applicant is not going to make this a commercial building, obviously, then nobody's going to be able to complain more. If it is a commercial building, it's people in plenty more on the site plan review, because it's a new, new building in that location and a new use in that location. And that's required, given the square footage, that's required to go to this.
So it's essentially a commitment from them to say, "Look, we're deciding we're gonna go the commercial route."
Yeah, and then come back, correct me if I go wrong, but I think you did state at the last meeting that this would be commercial and there was a question whether or not part of it would become residential, but it definitely would be commercial.
Right. You know, since the last meeting.
Right, primary use.
Question, why can't staff review do this?
It exceeds our square footage.
Oh, with the building?
Yeah. What's, what's that, square footage? Two thousand. You wanna knock off a wing, it'll be absolutely.
After the comments today, we may be willing to.
I think, I think.
Oh, I try.
I think the primary issues at this point are that we need to bring things up to commercial code.
Right. And they need to, they wanted direction of what, where to go. I mean, they have, this is just a pre-app, this isn't an application. This is a pre-app. And so what the, what the applicants are asking for is direction from the planning board on, on key issues there. And that's what they were, I think that's what we were talking about, the drive-through issue, and whether or not you could drive into the building and load there and then come out the side. And, you know, the only limitations that are really facing them are, A, number one, a driveway entrance on Route one eleven, which MDOT guards jealously, and so does our standards, too. And number two, the, the issue would be that setback, because, you know, that, that setback, both for, the building was built, it violates the, the new setback, but that was put on an existing foundation. And the code officer gave a permit for residential, but this is not gonna be commercial. The other thing that has to be done is that setback for fifteen foot buffer strip between the road and any, any driveways or other occurrences. Now, they don't really, don't have the room to do that. They can put a driveway, of course, you know, but that, there has to be, they can't put the parking in the front. They can't put a loading zone in the front. They have to have that fifteen feet before they do it. And dimensionally, they don't have it, because as we found out, they had lost some land from the original, original property during the widening of one eleven. Unfortunately, that's not something you can do anything about, but I think what the board was telling them was, you're gonna need an engineer out there to help you do the exterior layout, so you can meet those standards. And also, you're gonna have to deal with the drainage, and it's not a lot of, of work there for him to do, in terms of drainage, but there's gotta be a plan.
Has to be on paper.
It has to be. We gotta have a plan. And how that's gonna work, so we can determine, you know, how, you know, that it meets all the standards, that's all. So that's why, that's why we need that. And everything's in that, that section, what is it, eight twenty-six?
Eight twenty-five, seven?
Eight twenty-five. It's all on eight twenty-five, everything you need in there. Now, if you, when you get your engineer, what I would recommend you do is that, you know, to shortcut this, if he wants to sit down or he or she wants to sit down and work with you on this, he'd more than happy to do that. I'd do that with all of the applicants. To, to help you, you know, work your way through as quickly as possible.
My, my only concern is if we go forward with the engineers, maybe don't meet the setback for the building.
We're not gonna meet the setback for that.
So are you willing to work with us? That won't stop this. Because it's already, the building's already there.
The engineer will be able to figure out how to make that fit in, so that it, it will qualify. The issue for the board is the building setback. I mean, if that's still an issue, that's outstanding, it should be discussed now, because it's.
Well, why, why is setback an issue? It is built on that existing foundation, which was grandfathered so long.
But the existing foundation was for a residential structure, not for a commercial.
As a commercial. As a garage.
It doesn't, almost doesn't matter, it's structured, it's structured.
The process.
The use, yeah, you can change.
The process, the process has got convoluted here, and I'm sorry. The application that came into the code enforcement officer was for a residential. The code enforcement officer appropriately said, "Hey, you have this existing foundation. Residential's approved, go in." There's no.
But if they had applied today.
If they had applied.
If it was commercial, it still would have been allowed.
I don't, I, I am not sure.
I think, I think you're right, I think it would have been. But the problem is that they came in and got residential, and now they wanna convert it. And when they, they go to convert it, they're not gonna meet the requirements at that point. If they had originally said, "Here's the commercial aspect," though, I think they might have been.
If there was any other problem, or your, your old house, if you wanted to convert that to commercial and that property was allowed, that, that use was allowed. Your, your setback would be there, but the use would be allowed. That's the way I take it.
I see, my hopes wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't be there. This is a conversion, and I believe it's a legal issue. I mean, to, to me. I have, I have absolutely no problem. I think from the beginning, I think it was just the filing of the application, that it went to the architecture. They, they then told that they have to make sure that that's up to code, et cetera. But with the code enforcement officer, firefight suppression, which we've talked about, that went on. I don't, I mean, we understood, I, I thought that there was always gonna be a small portion of the building that was going to be commercial in the Alfred Road District, that mixed use had been encouraged as long as we did some other things. That setback requirement, though, for the commercial, I don't think, just on a personal level, but this one that we can, when we talk grandfathering, but the lease had been abandoned for over two years, meant twenty years, thirty, whatever, whatever it was, so that's, that's.
And, and I, I kinda looked at it and go.
The expense they put in, it goes to the site and Brian's taking, and get that.
I, I can't look at anything and say how, how long is, I couldn't tell you how far that door is. But you said to, to the end of, edge of your line, it was fifty-five feet from the door?
He thinks, he thinks thirty, I think somewhere around forty-five.
Yeah, I have, I have, so I have no idea.
That's why you need everything, having a plan.
Right, and, and the issue here says that, as shown on the sketch plan, or as depicted on the sketch plan, you don't qualify. So you're gonna have, you're gonna have to give us a better plan anyway. And I think if you have an engineer to help you out, that that would work out better. And, and you'd be able to.
That's, that's what we're asking, is are you gonna work with us to fight, which was an engineer, and design the driveway and parking lot? Because right now, the building doesn't meet the setback. So before I go to that expense.
Well, and, and, but that's the question, how, what is, what is the distance on it? Is it fifty-five, is it forty-five?
I believe it's forty, forty-five. Still less than required.
It's less than required, yeah, if, well, at fifty-five.
I believe that's forty feet.
The setback is, just looking at the setback requirement is forty feet.
Right, right, but you've gotta have that fifteen foot strip. So if the line, if it were fifty-five feet and you had the fifteen foot buffer, you'd have your forty feet.
But it says, no, 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 the strip is within your forty feet.
Let that.
Let, let, let's hear. The applicant, the applicant has a survey of the property. The property shows that the building is, in fact, twenty-seven point eight feet from the property.
Ooh. Well, that park, that, the property line was way up into where we were standing.
Is where we were.
Colored, that's where I got the survey.
That's, that's based, that's compared to a forty foot setback.
That's the existing, yeah. The, the setback for a residential would have been thirty-five, and for a commercial, it's forty. So.
So there, there's a provision in section four that deals with non-conforming structures.
That's right.
The one thing that I see in that, you know, pretty much a non-conforming structure may be added to, reconstruct or enlarge only if the addition, reconstruction or enlargement is not closer to the lot line to which the existing, existing structure does not meet the setback requirement. Is no taller than an, an existing structure that does not meet building height requirement and does not make maximum lot coverage more non-conforming. So it sounds like there's a provision there that.
That's a basis of one.
And, but, but that, to Bob and I, my discussion at the, at the site walk, there was a question of whether the change in use would waive that provision that we normally have. You know, we, we sort of inherently know it is residential, and you wanna expand it to put a garage on, then you do it, because you're not making it any worse.
But I think the, the problem with this building was that it wasn't residential, it was a non-conforming commercial property before we did the zone change.
It was a non-conforming.
Commercial property.
Yeah.
Yeah, abandoned.
I'm sorry, Bob.
It'd be a hundred feet back, because remember, this was in the R four district originally. Right. This did, this, this area just became AR District on June eleventh.
So what I'm reading in here is that.
You're at five, where are you, five, five three?
Four point eight point three.
Thirty, eight, thirty-five.
When we go, this new format is.
Oh, of course. I can wonder.
Yeah. When we, when we go through all of this, I would say this, and, and I agree with Jamie a hundred percent on that, and it seems like there is a provision. I would further what is written in the ordinance to say, with a non-conforming use, not only can you do those things, but if, if what was there before didn't meet setbacks, didn't meet some of the other dimensional requirement, then that too couldn't be, I think, I think the listing is more to show you that if it's a setback issue, you can't have, you can't make it worse.
Right.
If it's a height issue, you can't make it higher. If it's a whatever, you can't do that. I, I kinda tried to read those as more examples from where we could. So I would be, again, it would depend on how the board feels. There's a strict requirement for the setback. So depending on every member's interpretation of that, how it is.
So, I mean, to me, it's, and in reading this, it clarified it to me, because it doesn't have any of the ambiguities and questions that we were coming, making up in our minds. Changes in use, changes in zone, any kind of that.
Makes no distinction between.
Doesn't make any distinction, that's, that's.
If you have a building that's non-conforming, you can enlarge it, as long as you don't make it more.
And there's no distinction, as Ted said, between residential and commercial.
Right.
I unfelt.
Right. And that was the big question that, yeah, we didn't know outside. So it's really, it shouldn't be an issue based on that.
Right.
So.
I would agree with that intervention.
You can advise the applicant, yeah, he's happy to work.
I think.
We'd work with you on it. And, and at least, some of us can.
It would be a good move to get a consensus of the board.
It would be.
So that they can be somewhat confident in the fact that they can.
I'm just, I'm just thinking about this. I remember, you guys have all lived in now longer than I have, I can remember when that building was, was commercial. And that was before it became part of the R four.
Before it was zoned, maybe.
It probably was.
Before we got zoned.
It probably became non-conforming, because they zoned it at that point.
So we really can't make a motion on this, because we don't have an application.
Right, but, but, yeah, let's, we can get a consensus and say. So we'll start with Tom. Throw the chair, hang on, man. This is an application, it's not, it's a pre-application. It's a, it's a conference, but you still can make a motion, and it would be binding. And I think the applicant would appreciate a binding motion.
The, the, I think the, the issue with that, I don't know if we should do it, because we don't have a plan yet. We don't have a, we don't have an actuary.
To show that it's not, that they have an.
I'm for a different, I'm for a different dimension.
I do have that. We have the original view.
The application, no. Why, what's physically where on site, where the building is, to where the property line is, is physically there. Okay, is new construction that was done.
I don't think that we can use this.
So I mean, as set condition.
Ted, you have that's the same, that's the same.
That was last week's.
I don't think we can use this, because it says it's a residential application.
I don't want you to look at that, I want you to look at the back.
The backside.
Well, no, because I was, I was thinking that stamp survey attached to. I was thinking more along the lines of the section that Jamie read, decided to us, of, if, if we, if we make a determination that we're going to pay attention to that section of the ordinance, then I'm looking at this, though, and so. Because we're gonna look at, at that, and it talks about the non-conforming use, and says that it is acceptable, because, because of the way the building is situated.
Let me just, I, I don't think we need a motion or anything, because it is, in fact, in writing, that it is allowed.
But I think that the application is.
The applicant has asked, and I think we ought to be applicant, on what are, how is the board generally feeling about this? Or specifically, I would vote on this specific motion. Or, if they had something that they could go through, I think.
And that's, that's what I'm saying.
I'll make a motion for the purposes of the non-conformity of the building, I, I would like for the board to consider. I gotta word this right. Any, any, any application for a commercial building that, that comes before us, okay? That it, it, the setback requirement that the building would be deemed acceptable. Does that make sense?
No, I can't.
Or set up.
I would cite that specific.
For the cross said that?
I'd cite the specific section that you would.
Exactly.
To view that, I would go along the lines of the existing property line and the existing building, which has been presently worked on the old structure, does meet the present, will meet current, will meet, will meet the setbacks.
But that's what, that's what.
That I'm just saying.
Mr. Cheever, let me take a shot at this. Let me, just, let me attempt a motion, but based, based on four point eight point three.
Four point eight? No, use the current ordinance, not the proposed ordinance. Five point one point C point one.
Okay, based on that.
Five point one point C point one.
It will, it will comply with, with that provision, that a non-conforming structure may be added to only if the addition is not closer to the lot line. And I think, I think it, based on that, it will be allowed.
That's all. So your motion is that their pre-app complies with that section?
It complies, it will comply with it, yeah. I don't wanna say we approve it, but.
We're making a motion that it complies with that. Gentlemen, gentlemen, I do not want a motion by committee. One person makes a motion, I'm just putting my foot down, I'm not gonna, if I'm your secretary either. One person makes a motion, not by committee, okay? Because I can't, I can't record this.
We'll end up there.
Okay, read your motion, Tom. Recite your motion, Tom.
Yes, please. Based on, based on five point one point C point one, the, the non-conforming structure as located meets, meets the standard.
Meets the standard, that, that, that general provision, that does, it doesn't exist, it meets that, that provision.
Meets the standard for non-conforming.
Non-conforming expansion.
Okay. Do you all understand? I will read this back. Based on section five point one point C point one, the non-conforming structure on.
Seven eighty-two Alfred Road.
At seven eighty, at seven eighty-two Alfred Road is, meets the standard for non-conforming expansion.
I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Any further discussion? Is there any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing no.
I would like to discuss grammar, but I won't.
Hearing no other, go ahead, I'm more than willing to take that.
I have more want to amend my motion as written, my secretary...
Subject to, subject to dramatical approval by our wordsmith. Okay, the motion has been made.
Well, let's not break first today. I second them.
All, all those in favor?
I don't know.
It's unanimous.
No, you give up.
I can't believe you said that. Can I, can I add something too? Since we came to the last meeting, we actually hired an engineer, architect, excuse me, and he went through the, you know, commercial requirements, and so we have a new set of plans that meet all of the commercial requirements. So we've done kind of what was, what was asked of us, was to make sure that we absolutely knew that we're meeting, you know, meeting the codes. So we're making some relative and minor modifications to the building to meet all the codes.
Have you submitted those to the code enforcement officer? It'd be important you get a, you get a copy and then you're...
We gave it to him yesterday, I mean, today, excuse me, we just dropped it off today because we just had it printed today.
Yeah, because he'll update us as well.
So can you, can you update Jim that the building will, because he was concerned with the setbacks and it being able to be commercial?
Well, he'll see.
They'll be able to talk again, so we should be able to get a build permit so we can move forward with the electric.
Yeah, provided all, everything else is in place.
Well, that's all separate issues.
That's a very limited scope of...
We've addressed the issue in terms of whether or not that commercial building, why it is non-conforming, it can be a...
You aren't going to get any CL until that, until you get your site plan through.
Yeah, getting the site plan done and having him lay out the parking and all, and the curb cuts and anything else that needs to be full of stormwater.
Right. And once you, once you get all of those drawn up and taken care of, come back and see us?
That has to be in by Thursday.
To get on the agenda for November twelfth, yes, it would have to be. I have no idea what...
It's Thursday next, though.
Yeah, a week from today. I have no idea what's on the agenda for that.
Too much everybody gets on the agenda this time.
Oh, well, then that wouldn't work.
We may, oh, we may, no, motorless coming on there too, so.
No, they're gonna, they're gonna be before that, they'll be before.
Well, the, the backside might be on there.
Yeah, so it's gonna be the same job.
Well, that, that might be, but it'll be, okay.
So can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So today, our electrician, as we were talking about, attempted to pull, you know, electrical, commercial electrical permit so that we could meet the requirements. And he's spoken with the commercial...
Guru Inspector.
Jim Lamenden, the electrical inspector. And, and so he informed him everything that needed to be done. We just went to pull the permit to do the work, but Jim said, no, you know, we don't have a permit. Is there a way that we can work with, with you, with Jim, with TAD, to say, can we move forward and get the electrical done so that we can insulate, you know, the property and keep it, keep it going?
Very honestly, I'm not going to step inside the CEO world at all. I will inform him of this decision, but it's up to him.
I think that was the main issue, you know, I mean, it's...
Well, he, he should be operating without the playing board with concern on that.
Right.
I mean, I think his concern was he had a residential permit, which we all see.
But to Jim Nagel's point, I can see where he'd be reluctant to start to lead these guys down a path if the setback was a non-star.
He was very concerned about that. Absolutely. He was very concerned about that. And so that's, that issue's off the plate, and so now it's up to, but I mean, it would have been an issue frankly, if it was a residential structure, because there's no distinction between a residential and commercial on, on, on using an existing non-conforming foundation, so.
Well, Jim felt comfortable in applying this portion of the regulation for the residents is why they got that permit to do the residence.
Well, Jim's also aware that they, they have problems with their, with their proposed plan, to perceiving the proposed plan and meet all the standards of the new...
The setback, I think, is James' issue.
Yeah, so I mean, I will inform him of that on Monday because he's going to have to work. And then, but I, in terms of dealing with electrical permits, he doesn't go to the planning board and I don't go to the...
You don't go to the shop.
Yeah, and I'm not, I was really just kind of like saying, could you talk to him and...
I will inform him of this.
Yeah, I wasn't, I, I just wanted to be clear, I wasn't asking you to override him.
I can't.
I wanted to make sure, that's not what I was asking you to do, so.
And at what level do you require the sketch plan to be?
It's gonna be a full subplan review, full subplan review, just as it's shown on the application. You can download the application.
Pardon?
Is it back to pre-app or would it be preliminary?
No, there's no preliminary, you're, you're in the game now. Full game.
Full design.
Do the full, all smash, let's get it done, winner's here. We're gonna get it buttoned up.
Yeah, exactly.
Because it's gonna take at least two meetings to do it, and that's assuming everything's perfect, and rarely is everything perfect, except for these guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New applications. Brookside Estates preliminary subdivision application, conditional use application, proposal for a ten-watt cluster subdivision in a restricted community on eleven point nine eight acre lot located at one eighty-two Lot Cabin Road, tax map thirty-two Lot fourteen C in the R3 and Shoreland Overlake Districts. J Group LLC is the owner applicant, and the owner's agent is Walter Tepke of BH2N. Have you had a question?
I guess, how much do you guys want from me? Want a quick overview of where we're at?
Yeah.
Yeah, change like quite a bit.
Okay. Of course, I have to mention, I represent J Group, and you know the participants. What we've done is we've submitted to you folks a complete preliminary submission with nitrate study, full stormwater design, pretty much a complete set of plans pending recommended peer review from TAD. Quick overview, it's, it's private water, private set, underground electric along Scott's Way, Scott's Way will be a twenty-foot wide private road. Near submission packet, the road has gravel shoulders and a ditch, which meets the, the rural standard for roadway, but as designed, they intend to keep it private. We've gotten review comments back from planning.
From me?
From TAD. And the guys have since decided that we would eliminate the ditches. Basically covered a lot that was mentioned here in the E1. There's a few things we wanted to down the list that we addressed to sort of ease TAD's heartburn, you might have found on this.
It's not hard for me as much as concerning the project's life, the project's success.
Right. I guess the biggest thing, the biggest change that I made today after I'd gotten these comments was a fifty-foot setback of structures along the perimeter of the cluster portion of development. The outsale is just as an outsale, meets the standards of the zone, and what we had neglected to have here was, we, we had a, I think it was a twenty-foot setback along the rear. What I've done is battened that up to a fifty-foot setback for structures, and we've added the twenty-five-foot buffer, the educated buffer that's required per the standard for cluster. That runs along the outsale and along Lot Cabin Road. Initially, that was a forty-foot setback, we had a lot cabin, battened it to fifty to meet the standard in the twenty-five-foot buffer. Of course, with the open space on the remainder of the project, we achieved the twenty-five-foot buffer. Now, there's a lot of stuff in here, and a lot of it had to go with the ditches, what it did to our nitrate study.
With the dirt.
That being, a lot of stuff being close to ditch lines, the wells, the lot tend to be close to ditch lines. So we've addressed quite a bit of it there. The guys that touched base with the fire chief, well, I'll just go down the list here. The lot coverage, that as a note to the plan, we can do a basic sort of plot plan of one. Talk to the guys about what size house they intend to have, what size driveway they want, and so make sure we meet that twenty percent, or we just note it on the plan as twenty percent, same as in the setback or front that, front or lot size. We covered the landscape buffer. The concerns on septic and nutrient loading on forward, all TAD's comments back to CB and Mahar. They assured me today that they can address all those issues. Jason has talked to Woodson Well Building, who has some experience in the area. There are some concerns about the quality and quantity of wells because of our, mostly on lots two, four, and one, where there's a pretty small area there based on the nitrate study to, to meet the minimum well, well requirements, and Woodsons, they're pretty confident that we'll be fine there with that, but that letter will have forwarded to you.
My, my only other question on that, did you give any consideration of moving the septic? You haven't had to go out and redo the septic and move the septic forward?
Yeah, well, it was something we've kind of kicked around just in the last week of would we be better off moving these to the front? Because the initial plan, we had the test pits in the front, because we were, we weren't sure exactly where the septic was on the existing house. So next submission, that looks like that might work better, you might see that that way.
So CB and Mahar is gonna redo the...
Yeah, I've forwarded all the information back to those folks today. The, the first thing they're gonna address is TAD's comments that are addressed, that are here. In fact, he said it shouldn't be a problem. I guess let me ask you this, at the time of construction, if we decide to move these, do we need to amend the plan or is that a cudgeon?
To move the...
To the septic side.
Yeah.
I think they have to amend it, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
With the density, being so close together, move it, you need to know how it's gonna affect, that's my take.
Yeah. Soil and designs are really driven by your initial plans in your, in your roads. I mean, that's always the problem, is cluster, well allows the soils, let's face it, which we didn't have restricting, you know, that constraining layer at twenty inches, and unfortunately, you know, plenty of soils is very poor in the quality, so that's why we have plumes that are huge there.
So I guess, I'll talk to the guys and, and we'll see how they'd rather attack that if we want to move those to the front, update the plan and have it back.
Even with a window in there, yeah, I mean, it's not, I mean, you could put a window, a building window in there.
Well, Ted, if, if there's nothing on the subdivision plan that's signed by us and recorded in Alfred, and they want to, and he's put together a nitrate plan that's part of the set, you know, part of the plan set, but it's not officially signed and recorded, I wouldn't see why if he wanted to adjust that plan, why it would need to come back to us, but I do think it's appropriate to go back to you for review. Do you follow what I'm trying to say?
Yeah. That doesn't mean I accept it, but yeah, I, I follow it. Would I review that? Sure, I would, of course. What happened?
I mean, just, just, I mean, it's my thought, it probably would be something very straightforward.
If you wanted to give me that responsibility, I will, but I mean, I'm...
It would probably, I mean, you're checking the, the plume where they haven't laid out the setback.
Yeah, but if they move it, does it not generate all of the ones nearest there? There was, some of these kind of overlap and went and then you get a bigger one and...
Well, that's what happened with ten, ten was basically flat, and it just, it did a big spot.
Yeah.
It would.
So if you, if you move one, if you move one, I don't know this stuff, but if you moved one, it seemed like that could influence the other.
But could, you could get it down.
So depending on what kind of position you got to, so make the plan, kind of where they're planning and what it would look like.
For each three acres, you'd have that wiggle on, but it's pretty close.
These are very small.
But if, if they are still putting a plan in, in place and they're addressing these, you know, I think, I think they're showing a very good level of, of commitment to abiding by the, the nitrate plume requirements. And that, you know, they're doing that, and if they've got to tweak something, yeah, they want to make the septic field twenty feet in one direction and it alters the, the window of a plant, I don't see that as needing to come back before us.
I don't think those kind of things do need to come back before us.
We could do it that way, or else you could just say, this is, these are the windows, you have window A or window B, maybe.
You know, twenty, twenty feet is one thing, but taking it from the back of the house to the front of the house, the front of the house to the back.
Because, you know, it's gradient driven, gradient's different on each, each wall.
But that's a wholesale.
And this is a subdivision as well.
Hang on, hang on.
No, no, Paul was talking for us.
Yeah, they just, they just... But as a, but as a subdivision, for any changes to a subdivision, you either have to convince your staff or you would...
And that's, that's something that's, you get, you, you make a determination whether you give that to the, to the planner and the government officer or just the planner. I mean, I, I'm making big decisions up on, up on seasonal cottages every day that would be a full, full-fledged review by you guys. Because you gave me that, so we can do that.
The original point, do I, should this information not be on the signed recorded plan, I guess, right? It's where we started with this.
Oh, is that where we started?
Yeah. I mean, I can add a sheet, we can have a nitrate plan.
Yeah, we probably don't need that.
That's how I, that's how I've always, not to have it... Familiar with the subdivision plan is not to have that level of detail as long as they're recorded in Alfred.
But the only thing that I think you would want to do then, you'd have to put on that recording plan, the window for the septic system and the window for the house, where the well. You're gonna have to have some way of doing it so you guys don't get into a problem, and it could be a problem if, you know, if the lot gets sold and somebody decides, I'm gonna do, put it over here, and it impacts the neighbor. You know, that, that's the concern.
And, and I, I get that, especially with the size of these lots.
You don't want somebody filling the teacup in the wrong spot.
That's, that's why. I really appreciate our CB and Mahar...
Pushing hell's over the only slakes to where they could have got the log guy's septic system.
I mean, it's so much easier to, to really look at it and say, we got a problem here, we don't have, that looks good. And, and you know, it shows it for you too. I mean, you know, we've got some real limited well locations in this, in this, this conditions, these topographic and these sun conditions in this area. And if we show, if we come up, if we crap out on those locations, there's no alternative. And they don't meet the hundred-foot setback and, and CB and Mahar saying it's gonna, otherwise it's gonna be in the plume. And so, you know, you're, these guys, when they develop this, they're gonna want to stay pretty rigid and tell people where they're gonna do it, unless they're the sole contractor and they control that, but you're gonna want, you're gonna have very strong control of this.
Yeah, now we're gonna control if we start to finish on everything.
But we've come, I come up with options for lots two, three, four, lots of entire...
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, well, I never see me address that.
You mentioned that you were going to eliminate the ditching. What's, what are you doing instead?
What we'd like to do is, we've basically got a high point of the road here, this much of the road, of course, goes this way, and we're gonna run, we're gonna clean up along Lot Cabin Road to address some site distance issues with just low shrubs, and, and clean up a ditch that's there, an existing ditch. But this portion of the road, we, of course, everything comes here to the, to the buffer, is probably four basins and a grass shoulder that will go two percent for the roadway slope, and then probably three or four percent with a four-foot grass shoulder, the seat a lot in City Portland, and set up catch basins sort of at that channel that we form there. And it cleans up, it takes care of what we talked about in, in the memo with the gravel shoulders and maintenance of those. And in effect, it'll, it'll almost give lawn all the way to the edge of pavement for the homeowners.
Which, you know, I would, I mean, the playing board's gotta approve that change from the standard, by the way, because, because you did exactly what the ordinance said, you had a three-foot gravel shoulder. And the reason I brought that up is because the experience that I've had, which is painful experience in the last couple of years with projects, is that homeowners hate the gravel strip, as anyone here would. And what happens is they eventually lomit themselves, or else they remove the gravel and put in, you know, mulch, and there goes your road. You have no protection on the road. If you either, you know, extend that shoulder and pave all... If you either, you know, extend that shoulder and pave over it so that column there next to your road stays dry, it protects your road much more and all your, yeah, the, the expense is more pavement. Then they, who will do it anyways, can loam and, and, and seed all the way right up to the edge of the road.
I mean, it's a closed system, it's not very...
It's a big, closed system is a big...
Clarification, so are you saying that the road would be like a sheet floor on the road?
Right. If, if this is our pavement and we set a catch basin here, we have a four-foot, three or, we should probably say three meet the, the town standard, be three-foot grass shoulder. And then, of course, you would match back in whether it's up, down, to, to existing. But what we want to do, whether it's a closed or open system, is we're charged with treating 75% of this roadway as a sort of linear project. So we've got a, we've got about a thousand feet of road, 750 feet of this road, we've got to get to this buffer. So if this, we catch, you know, a little bit of gravel shoulder on all the road for the most part, other than what comes down, the, the existing ditch, one more cabin road.
So you'd have pipe in there too?
Yes.
Oh, is that going to go back to the, the Goff Bell Brook?
Uh, no, everything, everything's...
Or is this kind of leach its own way that way?
If you look at sheet four at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's a lava spreader there. And before we ditch to the level spreader now, it'll just be a, probably a 15-inch storm drain, maybe an 18-inch storm drain that'll get to the level spreader. Uh, that level spreader is probably 20 feet wide and then it sheets into the forest involved.
And that basically sheets into that one?
That's right.
I have a question on, because I, I don't know enough about the plumes on, on, let's say on lot 10.
Yeah.
If you were to put a foundation, a structure in, in the middle of, of that Y, would, how would it impact that flow of the, of the flow?
I can't answer that. I, I do believe in, and I haven't asked the fellas, but if you look at sheet two, at the contours, that, those test pits in that septic system is at the top of a hill on lot 10. And this, to me, if we cheated that eight feet this way, I'm of the opinion that that plume would look like that. He's sort of taken a, it could go any direction there approach to lot 10. And I don't know if it affects anything, houses being there, it never seems to.
Well, that's going into the...
Plus the concrete.
Or a barrier.
Interact as a barrier to, to have flow, you know, in that, in the natural terrain.
I mean, I'm floating toward, I mean, that's an educated guess is where they're assuming it's going to go.
Could be worse.
Could be worse, it could be better. I mean, that's an educated guess is what that is.
Yeah, I know.
The road's...
Well, they have, they have models, I mean, CBI Mahar uses models that have been pretty wild.
Another question on the, the wells, especially you've mentioned the tough ones doing one through four there. On, on three, it's just in the corner, even on lot 10, it's on the corner, especially where, where there's the, the road radius right there. How, it seems to me, if you're not knowing much, that it's just a small little window of, of possibility on that.
Yeah.
When if someone bases their, your, your goal might work with, and then lot two is using the same, the same little pool there, um, just seems like to me it could be potential problems in the dry summer, a dry year, would, would there be enough to also with that small little corner?
I guess that Woodson Well Building is going to give us a sort of overview on that to be...
Okay. Because one of the important things is that, that this, this all can work. And it is, Ted, it's far the nose that the most dense development we've, we've had in town.
No, stunning brooks up there too. Stunning brooks in the, around all states is the same. They're epic lots.
Ted, before they get occupancy on any of these lots, we have to pass certain like well production criteria, right?
No.
No?
We haven't, no. That's, see, that's, that's, that's often a mistake that most people assume. We have no regulatory power over water quality. The only regulatory water po, water quality issue is the planning work in terms of determining whether or not there's a probable or a high, high probability of, of potable water on the building side. And because of this, that's one of the reasons why I had recommended that we get some background information on the well, well, well productivity in that area. Because it certainly, uh, there's no, I have no data. Okay, basically, I have no data on what my well production is. Anywhere in town, unless I go to the state and comb through the records or unless I'm an outdoor, USGS is manned. That's all I got.
Because my concern is that the window is so small in some ways, if you have a low producing well, you have a problem.
That's it.
But I thought there were criteria that you wouldn't get occupancy if you're below certain production, so.
Not to my knowledge. Jim does not base occupancy on, on water production. He has no authority on that. It's not, not part of the building code, I don't believe. I could be wrong, but I don't remember. We have no data. I've never seen water, water quality tests in any of the records or water production.
Quality and quantity, yeah.
Quantity tests. I mean, it's something that's disclosure, that these guys need to put in disclosure when they're selling these, these lots or these homes, because they think they're selling these homes. And that's obviously something they have to disclose. What? We don't have any regulatory laws. We just hear about them when they're, they need ROs.
Have you looked at all at community septic and community water for this?
That's a more of a process to do now.
Okay, because since the lots are so tight, that might be the solution.
Yeah.
I know when I did speak to Woodson Well Building, he was just drilling a well for me, that, my property actually, where my shop's going in.
Yeah.
And he said all the average wells in that area are 200 feet or less. And he said, we ain't going to use any more than 20 feet of casing. His ledge is pretty close to the top of, top of ground.
That makes sense why you're going to push water to...
He has, and I was curious, called salt water, because I know up, you know, up here area, there's a lot of salt water. He's never heard anybody hitting salt water in that area.
Yeah.
So he had no issues with drilling out there.
Okay.
He was very confident that it wouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
So he was supposed to, he was going to try to meet us here tonight, but he wasn't able to.
Well, can you give us some, some good data on that that would help us and you?
I asked him, I mean, he's been in the business for numerous years. He did the one, the well at my house, the well for my father, the well for my sister, the well for the shop.
I have the documentation for existing house.
We were just trying to think about what that existing house has for gallons per minute, but we can't remember.
I think it's seven point something.
Well, that's, that's one of the, the big issues on this.
There's ways around that though. I mean, we've created systems in the industry that, you have wall pressure, your storage systems, the building systems?
Yeah. Always at work. The, the other issue we haven't really talked about is the buffering.
They did it, okay.
Yeah, well, I, I guess I haven't talked about it.
Okay.
It is real...
I'll take notes.
Mr. Secretary.
I'll take the notes. Why don't you, Mr. Chick, Mr. Chick?
One of my big concerns is along the, would that be the eastern side heading towards Cambridge side, lots six through 10, six lots right up against, you know, budding property that's been there for generations and, and I, I'd like to see some, some full...
That whole line on the eastern edge is all real heavy evergreens.
Everything that's, all along this back piece is open. That would be what, it's an actual state.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, the, the minimum of width there is 25 feet that we show. That's how we set that, that rear property line for lots, for lot eight.
The minimum what?
The 25 feet is what the ordinance calls for, plus...
For, uh, 25 feet for each lot plus 25 feet for open space?
It's a 50-foot minimum structure setback and 25 feet of, uh, basically natural conditions.
Which tend to be trees and stuff.
Yeah, it's all pretty thick with pentalocks and pines right there.
Ted mentioned like access to the open space in his notes. Do you have any plan, what, what would your plans be for that open space? Some just leave it?
Well, we want to get an H-2 down to the brook because the boy scouts have actually cleaned. It's very well manicured, it's a fire pit, there's a couple of seating benches down by the brook.
We talked earlier about maybe, we're, we're talking about this area here where we've got a bit of a wetland disturbance, just sort of a mulch pathway to sort of get them headed in a direction down into that area. If you've been down by the brook, and you know, maybe a picnic table or some seating, some folks could hang around down there a little bit, I guess.
Help too.
Yeah.
The one thing we do want to do is the roads are going to be private. We're going to have to try to police that path a little bit because we don't want, you know, every kid in the neighborhood just parking in front of these people's houses to run down and go fishing.
Yeah.
That's one thing that we are going to have to try to watch.
They're not going to let you fish in there.
Yeah. But it just, I mean, if someone...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, but I was saying, it's not like it's, the big pools of turn, you see, hungry room sitting in there, you know?
Oh, no. You know?
But I know living on a private road myself, we police it.
Yeah.
You know, you sort of know and...
Yeah, you just don't want everybody parked in front of your house.
Don't see somebody riding ass around and you ask what they're doing.
Now, is there an age restriction on this?
It's fifty-five, yeah.
I can't believe you talked about it, but...
There's a very strong, very, very, um, strong standards that you have to follow in your, in your homeless association documents that in order to meet federal fair housing acts. Because otherwise it's considered to be discriminatory house. So you have to meet those standards and actually incorporate them into the, into the...
Would you ask?
Right, we can just, we just have to follow the law when we do it.
That's above my favorite, Marty, attorney's all over it.
Yeah.
You're going to hate me? It's real love, Rich. It's going to be high in mind.
Anybody's a hacker, you're a...
Pretty much.
But we had just decided earlier about the ditch lines, you know, doing grass shoulders. I mean, that adds quite a bit of cost to us, but we do think it needs a lot cleaner look.
Better maintenance.
Yeah, and the people will be all mow and, I mean, I think it'd be a lot nicer.
It's better maintenance, not like having somebody throw a rock to get into the car or, or somebody else is going down the road.
Does the board have any other questions for the applicant?
No, you said this is going through DEP stormwater?
Uh, no.
No? I thought you alluded to that with the...
Well, if, if, mostly, we, we did, we basically look at it two ways. The town standard, which is the increase at the analysis points, but we always take a look at the DEP standard. It's a good guideline for us as a place to start, but we need both with, with what we were doing here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, especially frankly speaking regards to what DEP says, I like to discharge into the weapons from the, from the buffer because the weapons will be there alone as well.
So they, they don't lead us to believe that.
I know they don't, but you know, that's a forested weapon with a lot of uptake.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Disagree with all of that.
So what's our, what's our next step on this?
Well, I, I think what we want to do is they're going to submit some more information.
Okay.
They've got our, I'm excited to see what some new revisions could be in CBI Mahar. I won't send it out for peer review until I get back from CBI Mahar, there's stuff. How's that? Sound good?
Yeah. Now, what about the stormwater?
Well, I'm not going to do anything until you guys come up with a new ditch plan in the, in public.
Okay. Do you want to get any form of approval tonight? Preliminary, knowing that we're sort of headed in, we sort of address all your questions?
We got to have, we got to have one more than this and we have to have a public hearing.
Okay.
So if you can get us the revisions, see, because what, what happens, if I don't have the revisions, I have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Uh, what happens is people come in and they do come in and I say, well, I don't have that plan, I can show you. I get upset.
You made it for the 12th.
Uh, you get it to me before that, but it's up to these guys and what they want to do at this point.
It's a matter of if you get it to us before next Thursday, we could probably get it on for the 12th. We'll have three things on there that we know of.
Well, we can handle that.
Well, yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking. I mean, we had four tonight.
Exactly.
So if you can get it to us by...
We haven't even gotten to zoning yet.
You need to get it to us before next Thursday because we, I, I told the town planner, we have a 14-day guideline and I told him to stick with the guideline. This is coming in, eight days before the meeting, going, we want to get it on the agenda, doesn't work.
Today.
Or today.
With a lighting plan.
Now, when can we get somewhat of an approval so we can start marketing this?
Uh, what you want to, you, you want to go through the entire preliminary process and then you can do that. By the time you get, um, through preliminary, the final is basically just another opportunity for us to charge you more money. But that's pretty much, that's the final.
But you can blame Jake because he's the select...
I'm a quick learner. So we have to wait till the 12th then before we can technically, if everything's fine, we can start to market.
There's nothing that's preventing you from marketing that.
Yeah.
Coming soon, sign up front, is that? You want to put a project up?
You have to be, Kim, what if you have a, a potential buyer, what, what are they buying? It's not, there's nothing proven yet.
But that doesn't mean you can't market it.
That's right. You can market it anytime you want to, you know, if a buyer comes along.
Well, they, they, they sold my hand, didn't they?
Well, they're full of weeds.
Maybe it isn't...
The early bird special.
Uh, you could start marketing, there's nothing that's a good marketing. If you want projects signed up there, I don't think we have probably projects under it.
There's dimensional requirements for it, that's all.
The side requirements, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's more for their, our realtor. We got a realtor that's pretty aggressive and he wants to market this and he's had people looking for this type of subdivision and, I mean, I don't want to be standing on the sidewalk and letting the bus drive by.
I understand.
I mean, we're trying to jump on board with this.
You're in the approval process.
Yeah.
Just as long as you know, and it, things might move pretty smoothly, but it could be, it could be issues that, that will come up depending on engineer reports and, so it, it, you've just, it's taking a risk, that's all.
I wouldn't promise a 55-year-old they'd be in for Christmas.
Oh, no, no.
Do you have any concepts of, of what each unit's going to look like? I mean, uh...
I got a blueprint, I can...
No, I mean, but like a picture so that, that, you know, per se, like the floor layout, I mean, uh, you, you know what I'm saying?
It's going to be built to suit, so...
Yeah, but...
It's not condominium.
No. I know they're not touching one another, but I'm just saying they're individuals, but still the, the idea of, you know, it's a square building, but showing some of the options is that you can do. I mean, pictures explain a lot instead of just looking at a blueprint. Because most homeowners don't even know what a blueprint is.
That's what you need? That's what the board needs?
Right. Homeowners? Homeowners?
No, no, I think Marty just wants to know what it would look like.
No, it's not the board, I'm just saying it's your concept for remarketing, that's what I'm going at, it's not us. And we, you know, we've had someone to do that.
Yeah, we've got, we're building, we're planning on putting in there, we're, we're very, we spent, uh, the time of our turn, we're very selective on what's gonna go in there. We, I mean, we're controlling pretty much everybody.
You're not gonna let that, that pinkish-purple house that
No.
No?
No.
I've seen a couple of them recently, it's like, what is the matter with you?
No, we're trying to keep it all pretty consistent.
What could hold us up by this genomic, I'm sorry, I don't know what you mean, but
It's too low, almost any of the
Yeah, there's always surprises.
But at this level, I mean, all of our tests and studies are essentially done.
Sounds like it.
I'm just curious, from a board's perspective, what's gonna be the final failure?
Uh, how long is it gonna take you to put together the homeowner's agreement? Cause you've gotta put all of that stuff together.
The covenants on, um, building packages are done, it's just a matter of the 55 and older circulation.
Right, but, but all of that stuff has to be done because that, all of that's part of the final package, so you've gotta, you know, things like that, who knows how long it's gonna take?
I can wait for condos, condo docs said, and for final.
Okay.
Condo docs, I can wait for final, but all the rest of the stuff's gotta be solved by the time of final.
Yeah.
But in terms of what can hold us up?
You've got, you've got some issues with water quality and septic that you wanna check out, and you've got some design changes.
That has nothing to do with you, that you would say that, water quality and quantity is nothing
No, no, what we're concerned about is that you can get
But if you have to change your plan, and we have re-renewed the plan.
Cause that is their, as I said to them, the only ones that really in the town who have real regulation on that besides Jim making sure that the septic, the HHE 200 is 200, is 100 feet from the, the well. These guys, they have to, they have to certify that this project has a potable water supply for
Which one are they, from this well drill, I should, to get us there.
Yeah, well, they, yeah, we would like some data from him too, showing, hey, this well I got this, this well I got this, this well I got this, not just, hey, I'm a Waldrick driller and
Our existing well there should
That's a good start, but he's probably, probably got some other stuff in the air. Not, he knows other guys who do have stuff in the air. If I had that database, I would pull it myself, but I don't.
We can go pull up all their well covers, they stamp it inside a cap. What it is, we get on, you go do that.
You got a couple down the street, you're going where people are.
Okay.
All right, uh, one other thing I do wanna say, uh, ask the question, and we've had this problem before and I've touched on it, I know it's a thorny issue, uh, the issue of, um, fire, uh, fire protection?
I wanted to ask about that, I, I saw where you plan on sprinkling everything and then having a 15,000-gallon cistern?
No.
No?
We're not needed if that can help.
We got a sprinkler of it, there's no
Yeah, but there was a comment
By the fire chief.
By the fire chief, that you wanted
When I was a verbal, I, I never, I haven't gotten anything in writing, that's
That's why I said anything in writing.
Yeah, well, I've got that verbal, here's the issue, John, if you recall, and I, and I, and I want that, and I know this has been an issue for them, we need to get this squared away now. Because our subdivision standards don't have any provisions for sprinkling. They only have the ISO standards.
Not that we haven't tried.
Well, the point is that you have approved some projects with sprinkler in lieu of cisterns. I need to know, and, and that would be something that, I guess I would ask the board. Are you gonna follow the ISO standards that are mandated by the ordinance, or are you gonna refer to the fire chief, defer to the fire chief as is one of your options?
We have, we have almost always deferred to the fire chief.
You know, you made, you made Sylvain carry a 15,000 gallons for two years.
Yes, that was
Yeah, that was the recommendation.
It was 60,000 to begin with, and then he was questioning, kicked down to 15,000.
That's what the ISO requirement was. In their case, there was, you're looking at 80,000.
So, uh, let me clarify this, I need to make sure I understand, this, this, under fire suppression, says that the applicant has expressed a strategy of providing in-house sprinkler systems for all units, the fire chief concurs, and also requests a 15,000-gallon cistern in the middle, in the center of the cul- cul-de-sac at Scott's Way.
That was before the chief and I had a discussion on you.
But we didn't sign on paper. It's always on the, it's, it's, it's the essence of this, to get a statement from the fire
I wish we had a statement from the
From the fire chief stating that sprinkling is adequate, or sprinkling at 50,000.
Ted, you should've got an email today.
I don't want emails, I want letterheads.
I gotta get emails.
You can print your email.
Nope, he's gonna send it on letterhead.
I want, I want letterhead because I've, I've had many emails, and as fire chief, it's the only one, okay, just to be fair. Uh, an email, I've, I've, I've gotten burned by emails and, and, and there's no offense to anybody, but a lot of people get into mix sometimes, and, um, I, I would prefer something on letterhead that can be in the file that I can also hand to you guys and say, this is the requirement. If these guys are gonna defer, as is their, their ability to do east of the turnpike, defer to what the fire chief says, and what the fire chief, if they're going to defer that instead of ISO, then I want it from the chief.
Can I ask a question about fire protection?
Yeah.
You've got a brook right there, why can't we put a dry hydrant in the brook?
You can't reach the brook, it's too far away.
Yeah, there is a hydrant already up on the street over by the
There's two hydrants, there's one at Drawl Museum and one at Gothmo Brook.
Is there a brook right there on the property?
There is a brook on the property, but it's way far away, you're never gonna get a truck down there to pull stuff out.
Yeah, but if you go from the street, it's not even a thousand feet.
It's one truckway to the Gothmo Brook hydrant.
Yeah.
That's why the chief is okay with eliminating that.
Is it?
One, I could see that, sixteen hundred.
It's less than a thousand feet.
Didn't you say 1600 feet, Ted?
Uh, I heard from one chief that was 1600 feet. Look, I, you know, I don't have written information, I only have verbal information. They've had a conversation in which they have verbal information, this board needs written documentation.
Yeah, if the chief says it's a thousand feet, then he needs to put it in writing that it's a thousand feet and that he's okay with it.
But, my question to the board is
We're deferring to the fire
Deferr to the fire chief or go with ISO?
Deferr to the fire chief.
But I have a motion on that.
I'll make a motion, we defer the fire suppression to our chief.
What's the difference?
45,000 gallons.
It's about 80,000 dollars of my, my money.
On fireway, eh?
I thought it was Jason's funny. No, he's paying that motion.
We have a motion and a second to defer to the fire chief for fire suppression?
Question, does that mean we, we never need ISO again?
No, that's just for this project.
Oh, that's just for this
Just for this project.
Okay.
He said the turnpike, he had, you know, choice, what's the turnpike, there is no choice.
That's right, why said the turnpike, we have to do ISO?
We have to.
Yeah, that's the way the ordinance is set. Has the town adopted ISO?
Uh, no, we haven't adopted ISO, but what we did was, uh, one of the chiefs had written the ISO standards into the subdivision ordinance. And it was the ISO standards at that time. And it hasn't changed because it's not, there's no comment in there that says ISO standards as amended from time to time, it just says, this is the standard, 5,000 gallons, 10,000 gallons to start and 5,000 gallons for each additional unit.
Right. Yeah.
I might wanna do your homework, so I'm almost certain that's changed.
I, I probably have.
I have no doubt, but the problem is, we haven't even got to the subdivision, we're trying to still get, deal with it, zoning, and subdivision is next. But the subdivision ordinance has issues like this, moves the technology, and standards have changed, but the ordinance hasn't been changed and it has to be changed. Uh, it's not just water supply.
Well, just, just on fire depression.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second on the floor to defer to the fire chief. Any, all those in favor? You wanna pose? It's unanimous. Okay, we're good.
But just as for, for fire depression, we still sort of have to take care of what's going on.
We're doing that now.
No, it hasn't even come to the selectmen.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, John, appreciate it.
Okay, it was under agenda. No, it wasn't. Hasn't even been on the agenda.
The next item is, is land use revision.
The board's recommendation to the selectmen, never went to this thing?
Never went to
Well, I don't know if that's the selectmen, but it went to the town manager.
It went to the town manager, that double left his desk. I wrote up a whole fire suppression ordinance
No, no, no.
For, for, uh, subdivisions?
Yeah, we had, we had made a motion, yeah, we had made a motion here at the board
That was you in here.
To full, to, to have the, have to go before the selectmen
The DMR.
Put in for DMR to use the nearest available hydrant, and they said they haven't gotten that information.
I had sent that to the, or he made sure I sent it out, I sent it to the manager.
We asked the manager, the last meeting, he was here, and it still wasn't on the agenda.
Well, I, that's below my pay grade. That's, that's up to the selectmen, they have to go with it.
Well, no, it ain't, I never got to the selectmen.
Yeah, but if
It's not my job to get that, it's like, my job's to get it to the town manager.
If we've said, send it up to the food chain and it went to the town manager, it's his job to take it to the selectmen.
Okay, on the, on the ordinance, I, I hear we need to have some extra meetings along the way.
We're looking at two extra meetings, one on January 7th.
January 1st.
January 1st.
Complain committee wants, wants to get started on the R1 and R2 and R, RC districts. And they wanna participate in this, I guess. And I mean, quite, quite frankly, it's going to take a while for us to, to look through the, I don't know if it's gonna take us a while, but we have some, we have some of the things to deal with from the complaint, and it'll take, it'll take a number of meetings for us to deal with the issue of, of lot size versus, uh, use, use according to lot size.
Question on that, on that lot size or whatever else, is fire suppression along in there?
There's nothing to do with it.
So
It's this, this is what we're doing.
I, I don't know, cause I, I wasn't here to get that. Is that what you gave me the other day? Yeah, okay, it's sitting in my present, I just have that chance. I'll take it with me when I go to South Carolina and something.
Yeah, I'd like to read fun reading, sounds like you guys are gonna be very busy during work through April.
Yeah, I'm just, I want
We're gonna miss you.
They won't be here, they won't be here either.
Good luck.
We can tune you right in.
Skype you in?
Internet. We can Skype you, we can Skype you right in.
That, it, it will be an issue because Bob's gonna be gone and Roger's gonna be gone for January, February, so we're all gonna have to be here for the meetings. And we're only gonna have them every other week. This every week stuff just doesn't make it.
Well, don't count snowsars, with, with telling that right now, with too few people, we'll have less discussion going on.
There you go.
Especially with
They move a lot quicker.
I don't know, Roger just drags things out. Uh, okay, uh, well, yeah, so we, they're gonna be substantive issues, and there'll be some input from the, uh, complaint, because they said they wanna participate. Well, if we're meeting on the 11th and the 5th in the firehouse, can we cover some of the zoning stuff at that time? Yeah, three meetings are up, because I've also managed to schedule for the 19th.
For the 19th.
Well, I think what Roger's saying is, can we
We could, we could take some time.
Cause we, all we wanna do is gonna do a quick, right, public hearing, but after that, we can devote some time if you guys are available.
As long as, as nine extra items added to the agenda.
No, 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 it wouldn't be any more We're not, we're not gonna, like, on the 19th
Yeah.
It's not like the ordinance, we're not gonna be, first off, they, they're not gonna be able to get in, because it won't be, it's a 14-day rule. Ted's gonna go hide for the next week and a half.
I'm, I'm gonna start doing that, cause I can't get anything done in my office. I, I have so many walk-ins, so many phone calls with people, I, I just, yeah, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna
We've no place to hide, though. I have you off the firehouse. What? What are the fire department?
Oh, those guys are like, they're doing Tom Ford hell there.
Come to my office, you can hide out in conference room.
Have them make appointments for you down the office. You can do that.
Right. Right.
John, you know what it's like up there, I've got, I've got a paper-thin wall which somebody can climb over and say, and they have, hi, you in? And say, I'm not available, well, it'll only take a second.
I always knock before I say that.
I'm not in my office, you can hang out in the conference room, and we have wifi available.
Actually, you know what, I had four, I, I had, I stayed home for four hours on Wednesday and banged out. And four hours of uninterrupted, you can get a lot better.
Did a nice job on that one, I guess.
Thank you.
You look like you had some quiet time to do that.
I had quite a time, I wasn't interrupted at all, so it's not a crack in the rug, besides that, you know, it was okay.
So, so we will, we will work on
Lodge report?
That, we will work on the, the zoning, uh, framework on the 5th for a little bit, and then we'll do it again on the 19th.
Well, what I would really like you to do is I would like to have everybody's, to go through this and be prepared to give me everything before the 5th. Can I get a copy of this? The difficult, the I'll stop, I'll stop by your office on Monday.
Okay.
All right, I'll put it out. Yeah, um, what I'd like to do is get one through four done.
Yeah.
By the 5th, and I'd like to get you the next one by the end of week. Not this week, next week.
So go through it, mark up your copies, figure out what it is that you wanna change, uh, and when we get together on, on the 5th, we'll go through it.
It's not what you wanna change, remember, this is
Well, that's not what I meant, but
Look at it, see if I've made any mistakes where you don't like the format, you know, the couple, see, you know, I'm gonna talk about it now, we got a little bit of time. One of the things I did is I collapsed down, I put, um, I put the, um, the districts and the map together in one chapter, they had one less chapter, not that it changed anything, just made one less chapter. Uh, with the object was to reduce down the number of chapters where possible, because we have a lot of chapters, and with, we're pulling out all of those districts into their own separate chapters, there's a lot of chapters, so I was just trying to consolidate where possible. Uh, and then, things that are underlined are, are, are new additions in language that I had to add in order for it to make sense because not, you know, it didn't always exactly fit into the context. And you'll also see, I put chapter on, on sections, I put headings that are underlined, that basically, uh, there were sections of the ordinance that had a heading that said, like, skew angle, and then it gave the skew angle, this is, show me the skew angle. But then it stopped giving those things, then it said, well, driveway width shall always be, but didn't say driveway width, so I put in driveway width, so there would be consistency in labeling all the way through. So there are additions to it, and I, so I want you to look at those underlines, make sure they're not, they're always substantive as far as you're concerned, if you agree with some of those changes.
I will look at them and let you know
Okay, that's different than what we were, we were just looking at the format, not
We are looking at the format. You're looking at the format to make sure I've got everything in there, cause I don't have any secretary, but, you know, look at these things after a while.
Well, each one, I guess my only comment is, each one wants to get to the individual things to be exact.
Yep.
You know, each heading, if there's 12 sections to one, there'll be 12 to the next one, and if we don't use one in one, we should just put not used, and then have discussion among the group, why not? Why, or why did we need it in all of the others and not here?
So you're talking about future use of districts?
Yeah.
Land use district.
Right, yeah, and we go each one, that's, that ought to be
No, I agree with you.
That ought to be exact, and I shouldn't see it that.
No, she did.
Stuff really is comparable, is different, isn't different, that we have 12, 12 districts and nine of them are exactly the same, you know, cause it'd be a nice easy comparison if you had time to do it, actually.
Yeah, and, and, and we did do a lot of replication, eventually, went around a big circles and came back and did replication, and there might be something we could do, things where there are performance standards that are, are standard for several districts, but not if we wanna go that deep, fine, terrific, but right now, at this moment, I think, the thing we really wanna make sure we do is get the new format going, so we could go to town many as soon as possible, then
But the new format should be consistent, shouldn't it? I mean, isn't that what a format is, that's all I'm saying, make it consistent.
Yeah, well, if there's something that's inconsistent, that's what you, you know, people pointed out.
What's for future use, there's not
Yeah, no, that's, that's why I'm giving to you, otherwise you would've just had me do it.
Well, you had some, you had some comments, for instance, you had some comments, and I don't know, we can turn it off. You had a, you had a note that, uh, this came from section 3.5.8. Well, all of that's gotta come out. We have to do a review and make sure all the information is in there, and you were gonna do a master lit with all of those, that information, and they asked a question? What happened to this, you answer, well, that's in section X, no?
I was trying to get the format going, I haven't been doing a master lit. But it's good points to make, Bob.
There's, we gotta pull it out of there when we approve the ordinance, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, in our ordinance, say that these words came from the old section 5.2.
Right. Well, if we need to do that, because people are concerned that, that we pulled a fast one, let's say.
Well, actually, I think that was my point, is that if the master lit, you got the ordinance, and if they have a question over here and they wanna know where X went, we should know where it is in the new one.
Yeah, not, yeah, not so much
You're right, we did talk about that, and I haven't done that with the new one yet, but I don't think I've really changed that much yet.
And not, not so much where X went.
Section 6, I do, in section 6, it gets, because section 6 was the, the, the table and, uh, all of, all of your landmines. There's little notes, you know, all those notes, and then that, that undefined section, that's got, that's the, sort of the catch-all of all the, the junk, everything from, oh, well, you've gotta, your, your, your windmills can only be this tall, your silo zone can be this tall, your poles are exempt from height standards, you gotta be 50 feet away from the stream, you know, no calling mother on Friday, you know, all those ordinance sections are just jammed in that little 6.4.
That's right.
I'm not so concerned with people saying, where did this go? Cause they're not gonna, I don't think they're gonna say, where did it go, they're gonna say, where did this come from?
Yeah, both.
They're just gonna say, where did it come from, and we can say to them, it came from this section of the ordinance and we just brought it over. I think that's, honestly, I think that's gonna be the question. I think that's, honestly, I think that's gonna be the question, because they're gonna look at it as if it's a brand new document, they're gonna, what?
Cross-reference.
Yeah. So that they can look at it.
It'd be a separate, it's gotta be.
It's gotta be separate from the ordinance, that's the problem. That, that being said, on November 5th, I'm gonna be in.
Taking part in the ordinance, I think it's just something we need to have.
I leave on Wednesday the 2nd.
We're gonna have to start Skyping these meetings.
So Tom, Tom can share the media.
Yeah. If we can figure out how to Skype it, I could, I could do it.
That'd be a first.
Like I said.
You're out of order, I'm just gonna plug him.
Because, because it's non-regularly scheduled meeting, I'm gonna be out of town.
Skype, just one week?
Just that one week, that's the, that's the, I'm leaving on Sunday to go to South Carolina, and then I go to Illinois, and then I'm home. I don't.
FaceTime.
Huh? Oh, I have, do I have fruit?
Do you have any Apple device?
I have an old, I have a 6 plus that I don't use because it won't sync with my calendar. It doesn't sync with Microsoft Exchange.
They don't talk to each other on Microsoft Exchanges. No, I was gonna suggest, because we could do, we could do FaceTime using my computer.
Well, Skype works just as easy, that's not a problem.
I thought you said you didn't like it because it wasn't, it had a tendency.
It's great when it works.
Right, that's the point.
Try calling China and then having your Skype go up and down constantly, it's really.
If I can figure out how to work Skype, I'll get Skype on my laptop, I have no idea.
The only thing that's free.
It's really free.
That's worth it, I mean, I Skype every weekend with my son in Germany and it's perfect, and it's, the thing is, it's free, I'm waiting for somebody to put commercials on there to make money with it.
They will.
Yeah, right in the middle of your, your comments, there's a commercial for JetBlue Airways, shows the plane going down.
All right. Cluster for you. Plan a report, anything, comments for us?
We gotta get going here.
No.
Okay, I have one question, this letter has come out.
What letter?
You haven't seen that?
No, I haven't seen it.
It already came out.
I do boys, yeah, with a color photo.
A color photo.
Oh, oh, it's new one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen it.
I, I have a recommendation, I mean, after reading that, then, and I don't, and I'm, I'm here. We have, we have town representatives there in a dust, what are they doing about this?
That's something I can't answer.
You know, well.
Something I can't answer.
Well, I think people that, I think people that are concerned, if we're, is the town giving out numbers to call, where you can call where you're complaining? Why not, why not remind people that we have representatives in this town that should be working on behalf of this town?
Which is why I don't get it, because I don't get mail here in town.
You're on it.
Oh, I want, my name might be on it, but I'm not here in town.
No, I'm just saying, trying to pass it down.
Your phone number's on it.
Maybe that was the person who called me and would leave a message four times in a row.
I get them all the time.
Who else's number's on there?
Yours?
I explained the phone calls to them.
Mike Clark, Ted with Redway, Jim Vigo and Rich Coman.
Yeah, but see, Department of Agriculture isn't on there, our representatives of the town are not there, and, you know, you gotta complain, those are, those are.
Do you know the source of that?
No.
And this.
No, 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 it was mailed, it was mailed anonymously, thank you.
Marty, I understand that and I know the people are upset.
It wasn't mailed to me, I had somebody.
My, my comment to that is that if you haven't got the stones to sign your name, I'm not paying any attention to it. If you can't sign your name and, and stand up like a big boy in public and voice your concern about it, then don't tell me about it, because I don't care.
I'm just saying, somebody brought it up to my attention from that, because I'm on that side of the town.
Yeah.
Okay? And somebody just brought it up to my attention, and I says, I never even saw or heard about it, except for one was in the paper, that's all.
They got a valid point, it still stinks out in that neighborhood, you can still smell it. Alan Bitford, I could smell it over at the, at the sidewalk tonight, when I first got there.
Yeah, they've been spreading all week.
Well, they told, told Mike Clark from the DEP, no, you can't come on the barbie. Evidently, they think it's a federal issue now, I don't know.
I have nothing else in the question.
Okay, there's nothing else in the manager's report, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
Hold on, I'm gonna make the motion, somebody has to make it for me.
I'll make the motion there.
Okay, we're out of here.
You do the second, Roger?
Roger.